...context around which the forest management plan is being developed. I didn't have much time to pull this together, but some of you have probably heard portions of this presentation in the past because it's a condensed version of what I presented to the Friends of Carmel Forest about a year ago and also to the Carmel Garden Club and also to the Del Monte Forest Property Owners Association. So there's been a lot of opportunity for me to actually speak to the community and share some pearls of wisdom and some interesting scientific facts about the Monterey Pine Forest. So many people know about the redwoods here in California. It's iconic habitat. People come from around the world to see the California redwoods. They get up to 380 feet in the most ideal conditions. Here in Monterey County, the tallest one's been measured at about 303 feet, but we've all experienced and understand the context of California's redwood forest. Also oak woodlands. There are probably, I don't know, 15, 17 different species of oaks in California. They're again emblematic of our state, primarily, I don't know, the dominant habitat for millions and millions of acres in this state, often occurring in a mosaic with grasslands and shrublands, both chaparral and coastal scrub. But what about Monterey Pine Forest? People in the world see it, all over the world, because they watch golf tournaments on TV that happen in Pebble Beach. They see the backdrop. They understand how lovely the Monterey Peninsula is, how scenic, you know, but they don't really understand Monterey pine forests. And Monterey pine forests are unique. The genus Pinus radiata describes our Monterey pine. They tend to have, I don't know, short lives, an old tree, about 100 years. They average, you know, less than 100 feet in height, but can get up to 125 feet, sometimes taller. They have needles in bundles of three, and they have cones that radiate in what's called a whorl, W-H-O-R-L, around the branches. That's why they're called Pinus radiata, because the cones radiate around the branches. Now, there's always exceptions to the rule. This is an exceptionally large Monterey pine that was growing near the Pollo Corona Homestead, now on Pollo Corona Regional Park. This photo was taken about 25 years ago, and since this massive, extraordinarily large Monterey pine split and died. So the genus Pinus that describes all pines first evolved in the Mesozoic era. And on the, what side, right side of that screen is a geologic timescale, and that little blue star indicates the Mesozoic era when pines, the genus Pinus, first evolved. Now, the unique species Pinus radiata evolved from related pines in the highlands of central Mexico, and this happened during the Miocene, which is the little orange star on the geologic timescale. So the specific species radiata of pines evolved over time and then migrated. It's about 15 million years ago, and this is also about the same timeframe when Mediterranean-type climates evolved. Mediterranean-type climates are characterized by seasonality: wet, cool winter months and hot or warm, dry summer months. Prior to the Miocene, this kind of seasonal climate pattern did not exist. Now, why did it all of a sudden evolve? Well, in response to mountain building, continental drift, and continents shifting locations, in response to atmospheric as well as ocean currents. And today, Mediterranean-type climates are actually very restricted and only occur in five small places in the world, all on the western side of continents associated with cold ocean currents, except for the Mediterranean region, which is kind of in its own little realm. So what about Monterey pines specifically? Well, we know from the fossil record, which is that green map with all the red dots, that over time Monterey pines have existed in a lot of different places. From the fossil record, both fossil cones and fossil pollen, we have seen evidence of Monterey pines as far south as San Diego and as far north as Marin County. Now, why today are Monterey pines only restricted to three places, three small patches, three small populations on California's central coast, and two Mexican islands? Now, why does that happen? When we know that over time the populations have expanded and contracted in response to climate variability. Now, there was never contiguous forest. Monterey pines seem to have always been in patches, populations that were in patches that expanded and contracted in response to climate variables. Now, it's a soil thing. It's a climate thing. Where do they occur today in California? Anoanuevo, north of us here, the border of San Mateo County and Santa Cruz County. Interestingly, they occur with other species, both redwoods and Douglas fir. There's a population of knobcone pine slightly to the north of where Monterey pines occur, in this Anoanuevo area, and in the intermediate zone, Monterey pines and knobcone pines hybridize, which is very interesting. To the south of us, at the southern end of the distribution in Cambria, you can see the patchy nature of the Monterey pine forest there. The community has grown into the Monterey pine forest, very much like here in Carmel. There's a parallel. Cedros Island off the coast of Baja, once connected to the mainland. Zurich, very dry, has soils and bedrock geology similar to the mainland. It has populations of Monterey pine, again, in very small patches. Yet these populations on both Mexican islands are ever so slightly different because they don't have three needles in each fascicle bundle like our California pines. They have only two needles per fascicle bundle. So they're evolutionarily just a little bit different, and that's noted in that they are varieties of Monterey pine. It's Pinus radiata, variety Cedrosensis on Cedros Island. Guadalupe Island is way different. It's farther off the coast. It was never connected to the mainland. It's volcanic in origin, so it grew up as a volcanic, you know, eruption or whatever offshore, colonized by Monterey pines, but just like on Cedros Island, evolutionarily ever so slightly different in that it only has two needles per fascicle bundle. It's very interesting to me that Guadalupe Island has a botanical flora more aligned with the Channel Islands of California, whereas Cedros Island has a flora, a botanical array of plants, more aligned with central Baja, which makes sense because it was once connected to the mainland. Guadalupe Island was visited by Captain Cook, who offloaded a bunch of goats in the 1800s, thinking he'd be back and, oh, the goats would be a meat source for his ships. You know, they weren't pirates, they were explorers, acting on behalf of the English monarch. And he never went back, but the goats took off and the goats proliferated, essentially eating everything on the island, contributing to the massive decline of Monterey pines. Until back in the year 2000, there were about only 170 individual pines left. The Mexican government has embarked on a program to capture the goats, ship them to the mainland, and island, there's an island-related nonprofit that is conducting some restoration, and the pines are coming back. Now, one thing that's fascinating to me is that Guadalupe Island in particular has a botany, a flora, that has endemic plants that occur nowhere else in the world, including a cypress, the Guadalupe cypress, nowhere else in the world. So remember that when we're talking about our own cypress trees. So each population is different, yet they're all Monterey pines, Pinus radiata, each genetically distinct, ever so slightly. The cones are ever so slightly different in size and architecture. The genetic makeup of each population is ever so slightly different, yet they're all Monterey pines. They've started to evolve in their own little individual patches, in their own ways. Remember, these are restricted patches. They're isolated patches. Yet Monterey pine is the most widely grown forest product tree in the world. This is an image of a pine plantation in New Zealand, millions and millions of acres, primarily in the southern hemisphere, of genetically engineered pines, taking from genetic stock, primarily from the Monterey population of Monterey pines, and engineering those trees to grow fast, to grow straight, to be harvestable in 15 to 20 years. Tremendous industry. They don't call them Monterey pines anymore. They don't call them Pinus radiata because they've been genetically altered. It's now called radiata pine, but fueling, I hate to use that word, fueling a massive forest products industry. So one thing to stress about our local region is that the Monterey Peninsula region is what's called a climate refugium. And that means growing conditions can persist over time in certain places, resulting in these climate refugia. We're living in one. Refugia are local areas and habitats that have escaped regional ecological change over time, despite there being tremendous global climate changes over that same time. These refugia provide stable habitats. Now, if you look at the map of plant rarity associated with climate refugia, the darker green areas are areas of very high plant rarity, and that arrow points to the Monterey Peninsula. We live in one. It is scientifically accepted that we live in a climate refuge here. Now, why is that? Why are there so many rare plants? Why is Monterey pine forest restricted to these climate refugia, including the Monterey Peninsula? Well, this biodiversity results from five primary factors. The geology, you know, what's the bedrock? How does the bedrock weather into soil? And soil is the foundation for plant growth. What about the physiography, the look of the landscape, the topography? Are there mountains? Are there valleys? How steep are the mountains? What's the elevational gradient, you know, between lowlands and highlands? That provides for a lot of microclimates. What about the climate? Well, here in the Monterey area and in all the areas where Monterey pines grow today, we have a Mediterranean-type climate. We have seasonal variability, cool-wet winters, warm-dry summers, where we don't have a lot of rain. We have the maritime environment. We have the maritime influence, keeping things moderate because we live next to the Pacific Ocean. We're cooled by the California current coming down from Alaska. We're adjacent to the Monterey Submarine Canyon, where there's tremendous upwelling, keeping the ocean really cool. We're blessed and we're lucky because it's going to get a lot warmer inland, as opposed to here. We can't forget evolutionary processes and changes over time. All things do evolve, even in stable climates and stable habitats. But I want to mention that there's always weirdness, there's always mutations, there's always the potential for hybridization to increase biodiversity. So let's start with those factors and talk about the bedrock. This is a map of just a portion of Monterey County, a geologic map, and you don't need to understand what each color means. It's granite, it's sedimentary material, metasedimentary material, limestone, sandstone, the Monterey Formation, chalk rock, also alluvium that's collected in the valleys, brought down by rivers and streams and erosional process, filling the Salinas Valley. So just get a sense of the variety of color. Each of those colors in Monterey County is a different kind of bedrock. Remember, bedrock weathers into soil. Soil's the foundation for plant growth. So think about all those different soil chemistries, soil porosities, whatever, ability to hold moisture. So think about Monterey County and its variability, and then think about Kansas, the entire state, very simple. You know, the vegetation in Kansas, way different, way different. We also have physiography, the look of the landscape. And Monterey and Carmel are some of the only places on the California coastline where we have what's called a well-developed ecological staircase. From sea level to the highlands in our region, we have a stair step of elevationally different habitats, terraces, flattish areas that haven't been tipped too much by tectonic activity, so they're relatively flat. These are marine terraces carved by wave action, eroding the underlying bedrock over long periods of time. Long periods of stable ocean elevations that have created these terraces. And yeah, they indicate that, you know, there's been some uplift potentially, as well as tremendous changes in sea level elevation. Now, these terraces are eroded bedrock. On the Monterey Peninsula and Carmel, primarily in granites. On Jack's Peak, primarily in the chalk rock, the Monterey Formation shale, a very salacious, sometimes interbedded shale and sandstone with lenses of ash on occasion. Each of these terraces is veneered with marine sediments. You can kind of see that darker line there. Often, those marine sediments still have ancient sand dunes on them. In this diagram, the sand dunes are, you know, big mounds, but they're more like lenses, flattish, and they're not contiguous, they're here and there in pockets. Now, this creates a variety of different microhabitats for plants. This is a diagram or a map that was created by a woman who used to work for state parks, and the colors illustrate the different terraces, and you can visually, graphically see that. Very interesting in that these terraces create soils that are shallow, acidic, very nutrient poor. They often are overlying bedrock, just a few inches even under the top of the ground. And what happens is that these soils, being so shallow, on top of hard bedrock or sometimes hard pans, don't percolate water, don't percolate rain, don't percolate fog drip, and that moisture stays elevated in the soil column, which is very shallow. And it creates these layers that are saturated to the point sometimes where we have exposed puddles, wetlands, wetlands that even micro-wetlands that can support federally threatened species like the California red-legged frog. So we have bedrock, we have soil, we also have climate. Remember, we're in a maritime climate, where fog is key. Fog is also key to Monterey pine forest population diversity. Fog is predictable at this point. It has been relatively predictable over time. And because we have these very shallow soils, we get fog drip that can perch and essentially create irrigated soil conditions through those dry Mediterranean summer months. So we have irrigation that sustains the Monterey pine forest. There was a study done in the late 1950s by a forestry graduate student from UC Berkeley. He measured in one week over half an inch of fog drip. So we have supplemental moisture. I like to think of the pine forests as these little arboreal or tree islands. They're unique, they're disjointed, they're isolated populations, they're located in only three places in California, two Mexican islands, they're influenced by soil and fog, lots of associated interesting species. We know the populations have expanded and contracted over time. And Monterey pines have things that are called serotinous cones. Serotinous cones are unique to species that have adaptations to fire. Serotinous cones are cones that hold the seeds in the cones until there's a trigger that allows the scales to open and release the seeds. The most commonly studied and the most well-understood trigger is heat, heat from fire. Now, there's a gradient of this serotene, there's a gradient of the trigger causing the scales of the cones to open to release the seeds. Some pines, like toya pines, need a 75-degree day. Other pines, like knobcone pines, need temperatures upwards of 200 degrees, which you're only going to get in a fire. When I taught at CSU MB, I used to have my lab tech put knobcone pines in the autoclave for us when we talked about pine forests. And, you know, after an hour at 200 degrees, the knobcone pines wouldn't even have started to open. But three days later, those scales would have opened and all the seeds would have been in the pie pan. Serotinous cones, they're holding the seed bank protected in the cones above the forest floor, where the seeds could be preyed on by birds or squirrels or become rotten because it's damp, because there's fog drip. When there's that heat trigger, the cone scales open. For Monterey pines, that can happen on a very hot day. And in fact, cones that are radiating around the trees, radiating around the branches in these whorls, sometimes when the cones are exposed to the hot sun, they'll open on one side of a whorl, but they'll stay closed on the other side of the whorl. So releasing those seeds, which have little wings that sometimes fall straight to the ground because they're heavy or float away in the wind. Now, do you need fire? It can be helpful. This is a portion of Fort Ord where they did a prescribed burn, and there's lots of pines coming in. But do you need fire? No. This is an image of the forest floor in the Del Monte Forest, and it's really hard to see, but here's a, I don't know if you can see my cursor, it's probably kind of hard. Here's a little pine ceiling, there's a little pine ceiling, here's a little pine ceiling. This is in the damp shade. This is under the canopy of Monterey pines. This is where there's a thick duff layer of needles and a lot of leaf litter. But the pines have found just what they need. Now, where do pines grow? They grow in sand dunes at Asilamar, they grow on the rocky shoreline at Point Lobos, they grow well over 1,600 feet, like at Lobos Ridge. Here's an image from the, almost the top of Jack's Peak, looking out towards Carmel Valley and the San Lucias. What grows with our Monterey pines? Well, coastlive oak, one of Sarah's favorites. It can be a co-dominant, as long as there's more light in those particular microhabitats. We can get bishop pines, but only in the worst of the worst of the worst soils, the most nutrient poor, the most acidic. Interestingly, and I don't know if you can see my cursor, here's the Monterey Peninsula, we have very few bishop pines, but they're far more common to the north and south. We have two very interesting cypress trees, Monterey cypress and Gowan cypress. Monterey cypress occur on the Rocky Headlands, close to the ocean. Gowan cypress occur inland, on the higher terraces, where the soils are particularly acidic. It's kind of hard to see, but the map in the center shows the distribution of both Monterey and Gowan cypress at the time of the first European contact. This is it. This is the only places where these two species were found. Monterey cypress in brown, hugging the Rocky Headlands, Point Lobos and Pebble Beach, flanking Carmel Bay and nowhere else in the world. Gowan cypress inland, shown in green, above Pebble Beach on the higher terraces, and above Point Lobos on the higher terraces. Again, nowhere else in the world. So here's a picture of Carmel Bay and the Monterey cypress there, and the map, just to remind you. Technically, Monterey cypress is not native to Carmel. Technically, at the time of first European contact. Did it grow throughout Carmel at one time? Probably. We have not studied Monterey cypress as much as Monterey pine, but we know from the fossil record that Monterey cypress cones have been found as far north as Marin County and in the La Brea Tar Pits. What's the type locality, the place where it was first described, Monterey cypress, 17-mile drive, Rocky Headlands, Cypress Point. What about Gowan cypress? Higher on those terraces, really different look. Because the soils are so acidic and nutrient poor, the cypress tend to be dwarfed, they're pygmy trees. They can be my height and 200 years old. Yeah, that dates me. So this map bears a little bit of study. It's a little bit hard to interpret. The green areas are protected Monterey pine forest habitat areas. The big green area in the middle, Jack's Peak and the Joyce Stevens Monterey Pine Preserve, conservation easements in Del Mesa and Pacific Meadows, a big protected area around Pescadero Canyon and Pebble Beach. Point Lobos, of course, lighter green areas, other protected habitats in either parkland or conservation easement status. The dark salmon color, those are areas of pretty contiguous functional Monterey pine forests that have not been protected in some ways. And the lighter pink color, all those areas around the Monterey Peninsula, including Carmel, that used to support functional Monterey pine forest. What does the acreage look like? Well, let's concern ourselves primarily with the Monterey Peninsula acres. This was all mapped by Green Info Network in San Francisco a number of years ago to update the Monterey Pine Forest Preserve, excuse me, the Monterey Pine Book, when the Joyce Stevens Monterey Pine Preserve was first protected by the Regional Park District. So historic extent of Monterey pine forest on the Monterey Peninsula, about 16,000 and a half acres. Currently, it's about half that. And of those 8,460 acres, half that about has been protected, while half that is not protected. What did the pine forest look like here? Well, we don't really know. We know it was here. We know for a fact it was here. We have fossil records, we have early diagrams, we have paintings and pictorial records from the first explorers. But the picture of the Carmel Mission there was more than 100 years after the first European colonists essentially came and established the mission. So think about what those people needed in terms of wood, wood from pines, wood from oaks, wood from redwoods. They needed it for construction, they needed it for fuel to heat their homes, fuel to cook with, wood to make fences, all kinds of structures. There is a book called Storied Land about the history of Monterey, written by an author who just passed away, John Walton. I recently reread that, and he has factual information that documents the population of indigenous people around the Carmel Mission at about 700 people. That's a lot of people living around the Carmel Mission. Where did they get fuel? Well, they harvested the forest. And we know that the forest was harvested afterwards. The tracks in the lower left, leading out of the Spanish Bay Woodlot, and then, of course, the classic iconic picture of Ocean Avenue and Carmel. We know that there were pines here, but we don't know what it looked like early on because we just don't have that data. This is a photograph I pulled out of that glossy Carmel magazine. It didn't have a date, but this is a number of years ago. I just scanned it out of the magazine. In the Carmel Mission, there was some kind of a celebration, and you can see the cars there in front of the mission. There's obviously been a lot of restoration that's already happened, some kind of celebratory event. And people there were walking on the old mission trail. But notice the lack of trees. Yeah, there's some Monterey pines in the top center, and there's some willows growing in the creek bottom of what's Mission Trail Nature Preserve today. But there's not a lot else. This area not only was harvested for wood, but then grazed for cattle and horses and oxen and farmed for whatever was being farmed, including hay. So we know this area's been used by people a lot. But it still, today, supports a lot of rare species, some that grow nowhere else except for in Monterey pine forest, like the pine rose. Cool things like Yaden's Rain Orchid, named after Vern Yaden, the old director of the Pacific Rim Museum of Natural History, federally endangered orchid. Each little tiny white flower is a perfect orchid shape. And then one of my favorites, the Hickman's Onion, which happens to grow in the coastal prairie, the coastal grassland at Mission Trail Nature Preserve, which is probably the rarest habitat of all in the entire city of Carmel, because there just isn't any coastal habitat that supports those prairie grasslands anymore. And cool things, of course, like witch's teeth, which is stunningly beautiful, yellow, orange, and lavender. More common things that we find in the understory still today, gooseberries, huckleberries, coffee berries, toya, iris, monkey flower, and the pink flowering currant, which produces berries that birds really like. More uncommon things that we still find today in the understory, bear grass, which isn't a grass at all, it's actually related to lilies, of all things. It has long leaf blades that look like grasses that were used by Native Americans for basketry. And we have one of the southernmost populations of bear grass here in the Monterey Peninsula area. Two different, unique, endemic, growing nowhere else in the world, banzanitas, the Monterey cyanophytes, grows nowhere else in the world right here, except for right here, funny willows like schooler's willow, only found in pine forest habitat, and a really cool shrub called chinkapin, which has golden-yellow backsides of the leaves and shiny, dark-green upper sides of the leaves. What else is found here besides plants? Well, apex predators, mountain lions, bobcats, you know, bats, fox, gray squirrels, deer, smaller, both mammals, bird life, amphibians, and reptiles. Not only a home for plants and animals, but for people, the The pine forest here locally has provided a tremendous amount of inspiration for people. This is an image of the old Carmel Camera Club. Paintings. I really like this one by S.C. Yuan of a Monterey Cypress. Contemporary woodblock by artist Tom Killian of Point Lobos. Drawing inspiration from Big Dome at Point Lobos, the Cypress and the Pines. Not only artists, but authors, poets. Jeffers, Sterling, of course, Robert Louis Stevenson. The forest provides benefits for not only plants, animals, and inspiration, but ecosystem services. They're beautiful, right? They provide us places for recreation. They're good for our health. Trees provide carbon sequestration. Natural habitats help with stormwater management, act as a filter to improve water quality. Trees provide shade, which reduces our energy costs in the summer months. They increase air quality by filtering out airborne toxins, particularly with those draping lace lichens, which trap not only airborne toxins, but airborne nutrients. Vegetation helps buffer noise. Of course, provides wildlife habitat and increases biodiversity. But I want to make a very important point, that Carmel and the Monterey Peninsula have urbanized forests. Urbanized forests, forests that were pre-existing where communities were placed, as opposed to urban forests, which are collections of trees placed into a community. Very different, very different dynamics biologically, very different dynamics in terms of management responsibilities and how you go about managing your trees. Now, pine forests, Monterey pine forests, have a lot of challenges. We know that in the past, 30 years ago, pine pitchcanker was rampant. And there were all sorts of alarm bells that went off about the massive destruction that was going to happen from this introduced pathogen. Well, what we saw over time was that the Monterey pine forest, and particularly individual trees, developed this acquired immune resistance to this pathogen. And these immune trees then propagated with seeds and created more immunity within the population. I think we made a mistake 30 years ago in that we got all freaked out and started clearing away all these pines that we thought were diseased, and we may have eliminated some of those individuals that would have eventually acquired an immune resistance. So we need to be cautious about pathogens and not jump to conclusions. Habitat fragmentation is an issue. When you fragment a forest, you remove the buffering benefits that the individual trees provide for one another. You create roads and pipelines and infrastructure and, you know, overhead power lines. And you damage roots, you impact the canopies. These trees have very shallow roots because they're adapted to growing in these shallow nutrient-poor soils. There are all kinds of issues also with invasive species, which reduce biodiversity. They take up space that the native plants otherwise could take up. But underlying all these interesting challenges is the fact that our Monterey pine forests are still considered the genetic core of a vast plantation industry throughout the world. Plantation industry professionals are concerned about diseases, pathogens, invasive species, habitat fragmentation. And they send their biologists, they send their forest pathologists here to study our pine forests, to see how our pine forests are responding. Because we have more or less a natural environment where things are going to be adapting to changing conditions. So we have a gem, in a sense, a biological gem that other people come to study. Just last summer, a bunch of forest pathologists from the National Park Service and from Latin America and from universities came. There are consortium of plantation pathologists. And they came to study our pines, to see if we had diseases that were somehow kept in check. And they did find some. Now, too bad Justin stepped out, because he would appreciate the many challenges of managing an urbanized forest. You guys all know what those are. You don't have space. And when you do have space, it's constrained. There are a lot of trees that have been introduced that drop their leaves in the summer or in the winter months, and then they clog your culverts and make it challenging. What about pines? Well, they don't live long. They're, you know, a hundred years is an old pine. Yeah, the snags, the dead pines produce some habitat. They have very shallow roots. They're adapted to living in these shallow soils, overlying hard bedrock, where water doesn't percolate. So these shallow roots, when particularly the trees are fragmented or habitats fragmented, fall over. And many of you in this room have experienced that. I know that. It's hazardous and challenging. These are two diagrams I pulled out of the draft management plan that I prepared and submitted to the city in June. The top diagram is a pie chart from your 2009 general plan, the local coastal program update. And I just want to call people's attention to the pine forest pieces of the pie. This one, I've got to take my glasses off to read that. 1981 to 1984, populations of trees on public public property. So that's lands within the city that the city is responsible for managing. So compare 1981 to 1984 with this one here, which is 2005 to 2008. And the population or the distribution of Monterey pines has been reduced. Now, that's only on Carmel's streets and medians and...
It doesn't include Mission Trail.
Exactly. It doesn't include, this is a data gap. It doesn't include Mission Trail Nature Preserve and Forest Hill Park. So there's some misconception. But within the city's managed lands, streets and medians, there's been a reduction of pines and increase in oak. Now, look at this one down here. This is the result of the Davy Resources Group survey from 2023 to 2024. This is a pie chart I put together based on the table that Davy had in their original report. And coastal live oak has dramatically increased on public property. Monterey pine has decreased, but this is the pie chart piece that has really increased. This is other. So just a variety of different species that have been either introduced intentionally or have come into the habitats that the city is responsible for managing. Now, these, this is the last slide. These native stands that are still more or less intact and functional forest areas like Mission Trail Nature Preserve not only provide storehouses of the biodiversity and genetic diversity that used to really characterize the entire community of Carmel, but they also are buffers that can be managed for wildfire hazard reduction. They can be managed as areas where you can increase native tree canopy, where you can actually create increased areas of biodiversity to compensate for the lack of biodiversity in other parts of the community where it's not particularly well-suited, just because you have constraints on space and infrastructure. But they shouldn't be considered the place where you put all your resources, because there's still opportunities within the city of Carmel to create these contiguous threads, if you will, or patches of really good habitat to maintain the city's natural character. And just to conclude, the city's at a real inflection point right now, where you all and your many residents and neighbors have choices to make. You are at a point where you can determine the direction that you want your pine forest habitat and oak forest habitat and Monterey Cypress forest habitat, in general, your cityscape. You have the opportunity to determine what direction you want it to go in. There's a tradition in the city of managing your forest in a certain way, and you can continue that, modify that, alter that, and it's up to you. Okay, I'm open for questions or whatever, or move on to the next...
Thank you so much.
And swap.
That's what's great about the community sharing and having a community approach to managing forests that we all learn all the time. We have experts here, but it's always great when we share information and our work about how to best manage the forest that we're here to explore. Before we jumped in, first I want to acknowledge, before people start making comments. When we look at the current draft, it's just a draft, it's not the final document. And I sent an email to the internal committee that those who weren't on that email chain and posted to the public. We acknowledge that there's some pieces we're still going to be adding here, which is something that maybe we should share, historical and ecological. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing forests nationally? It'll bring that context. We will be adding that in. It's not going to be missing from the forest. So I'm missing anything else that we can share on that?
No, that is exactly because if you look at the 2001 plan, the meat of the plan is a relatively small, pulse document beginning. And the rest of the big, long plans are appendices. And we can swap those in and out, just like the trees, the tree list, which when we eventually perfect that, that can be added to the end. And we can add things at the beginning and the end, that aren't going to affect the actual action plan.
The action plan is a big lot, or not, it's a...
Yeah.
What are the...
I just have a quick question on tree species. Clicking on tables at the end of the presentation.
Yeah.
The comparison across the years.
Yeah.
So we've talked a lot about, we've seen, well, depending upon, I mean, if you include Mission Trail and Forest Hill Park, it's to be determined how many pines have decreased. But the cypress, interestingly, have maintained pretty constant across all three of those graphs.
Yeah.
Is that because of the nature of just being along the coastline, do you think? And not penetrating the entire city topography? I'm just curious, because you had one slide that showed cypress just on the coast.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know if that's because they've been...
So we're having problems with the UFOs, so we're going to start casting them around. They have those.
They do.
Do they?
No, it's even the...
Yeah, even the...
So Kelly, I'm going to work. I'm not sure how to answer, because I don't know how Carmel has managed its cypress trees. I know that there has been a certain degree of replanting along the coastline. But I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how the trees have been managed.
It's interesting, because in the... These are all the survey work we did. You know, when people, the aesthetic of the trees, there's a sentiment between the pines and the cypress.
Right.
Like they think it comes up both, right? So it's just curious.
I can speak to it, because I'm not yet. There were hardly any cypress in Carmel. We were all along the ocean, and it was all monterey, virtually. That's not true, that's... Well, certainly, most of the, most of, I mean, pines were the most dominant. I think they made it 70% of the forest in the San Francisco. It's all sort of that. We've got way more pines. The pines when I first came in the 40s and 50s and 60s were simply not that many. They were pines, and there were in certain areas like... But they've been planted, definitely, and planted a whole lot because, well, because of the lighting, but like cypress, better said. But it was good sales.
I mean, we're making this a town look as though it was established where it was just very much beginning. It really wasn't until 87, when the Fence of the Forest developed and started planting pines all over in city property, and they had the right to plant it where they wanted. And that frankly made it much more crowded, but also it took away the views. And then, you know, then there's the question, are our views of the ocean important to Carmel? Is that part of why we like it and what attracts people? So I think that they're just, the lot where we lived on Santa Rita, north of Forest Theater, that area had very few trees and there were oaks.
Well, I guess our...
I don't think this is actually working.
Our memory is very different. Yeah. I ask because she says that.
There we go. Good morning. So this is more of a process slash project management question.
I was going to say, what...
I'm sorry, what?
I was just here, but then I was going to say, if I didn't hear her...
Yes, okay. I guess...
Hold it up to your mouth.
Pardon me?
Oh.
Okay, so, so my father grew up here. He was a boy, and he wrote a description of what the forest was like when he was a boy. We live on Lincoln between 4th and 5th. All the houses between us and the footbridge, we're not there when I was a girl. It was wild Monterey pine forest, all Monterey pines with some oaks, with some wonderful old oaks. But my father described it, and he was a forest pathologist. And so he was a very, he was a scientist, and he really had an observational ability. Worked with the Carnegie Institute in the summer times. And he said that Carmel was all Monterey pine from Monteverde up to the 80-acre tract and down to, pretty much down to the mission, although it was pretty straggly because there had been grazing and wood removal. But then from Monteverde to the ocean, it transitioned into chaparral and then scrubland with, you know, sort of scattered pines, oaks, and that sort of thing. And it was sort of straggly like that, but it was, the forest was actually down, there's a picture, 1906 of Arnold Gent's house, and it's down on Camino Real and 11th. And he's got pines all around him, and some of them are quite nice and mature. But also, in front of him is scrubland. I guess that would be coastal scrub. Yeah. So it was more open. So parts of the city were literally more open. But there were 400 acres of Monterey pine. And in the first issue of the Monterey, of the pine cone, the Carmel pine cone, they advertise Carmel, say, come because we've got this beautiful beach, this white sand beach. We've got, you know, the beautiful bay, and we've got 400 acres of Monterey pine forest with all the balsamic air, you know, quality of the sierras, et cetera, et cetera. So it was really a selling point.
So how many acres are there at Carmel?
I don't know.
Forest today?
No.
Carmel by the season, how many acres?
I don't know. How, for...
About 70 acres.
Right, so it was mostly Monterey pine. Right, and Mary Austin described it that way, too, as a tangle of Monterey pines and cianotes and coffee berry and manzanita.
Well, by the 40s, that wasn't the case.
Well, I guess, yeah. I think we, I think in the 50s, the late 50s, we sort of had an awakening moment about the forest and its deterioration. And thereafter, I think they started planting pines. And some of them, unfortunately, were New Zealand pines, probably. So some of our older pines in the downtown area could be non-native source trees. But there were still a lot of old, you know, veterans. And as I say, my area was solid pines. They were all native, too, and large. So... So, I think, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so I think maybe it has to do with that, you know, the areas. So... Neil, did you have something to say?
It's great information, and what I'm going to say is probably not going to be as interesting to a lot of people, and maybe not as fun, but I think we need to talk about it. If I was developing, managing a document, being built out, I'd build out a RACI matrix. What is that? Responsible, accountable, consulted, informed. You know, who are the roles? Who's responsible for building out, making sure the document's getting produced? I'm concerned right now, really, with just accountable, who's owning this document? Who's going to make sure it's getting delivered? I would like to see Mr. Versace, Dr. Versace, as the singular owner. I think people are going to be responsible for content, absolutely here, but I'd like to make sure there's one person owning the document at this point to bring it over the finish line, if you will, make sure it gets completed.
I kind of have a process question also, and again, I'm coming late to this, so it's about how did we get here? So, my understanding is we went to Davi, we spent, my understanding is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to get them to do that report, and at some point last year, the group got together and said, we don't like this, and redo, and come up with something new, because this, we spent a hundred and six, that just blows me away a little bit. How did we get, what happened when that Davi report came out that we said, we hate this, and blow a lot of it up, to we getting a, sorry, nineteen-page document out of that? What was the, what happened in there? Because I'm still blown away by that.
Davy Tree, Davy Tree Experts.
Yeah, so the Davy Tree report included a lot of inventory, a lot of data collection, and a lot of analysis of canopy and, you know, tree species and all that. Last fall, a year ago, when we all got together and reviewed the Davy report, there was some pushback about the style of the report and the format and the suggestions for how to move forward managing Carmel's forest. At that point, the Forest and Beach Committee asked whether I would step in and revise that plan and pull in elements of the 2001 plan, which I did, and produced a report with, I don't know, five or six or seven appendices, and then using the goals and objectives that this group literally deliberated line by line for two days, that Kelly transcribed for me, put that, incorporated that into the next version of the draft forest management plan, and then passed that on to the city in June. And at that point, I think Ken was relatively new, and he took the draft material that I put together and further refined it, made it more concise, updated and changed the goals and objectives to some degree, a little bit, added the section on fire management at the end, and put the goals and objectives into a table format, which is a lot more concise and easy to read, I think personally, than the text version, the narrative version that both Davy used, which I then basically used. And that's where we are today, looking at this third revision, I guess you'd call it, of the original report.
I would say building on that, Carrie, it's, it wasn't that the whole thing was thrown out, but the format, it was, in fairness to Davy, I will say it was their first draft to us, or first or second draft. It was delivered in a PowerPoint format as opposed to a document format. That was very, caused a lot of consternation in the community just on the document format aspect. So, last fall, there were two pieces of critical feedback. One is that, and it was actually in Nikki's charts about the tree species subtypes, one of the conclusions that Davy had was that our forest was too concentrated on Monterey pines and cypress, and oaks, right? That we have very high concentrations of a couple of species, which is not healthy for today's forest. And I think our community survey actually showed that our community really values the concentration of these trees in our community and wants to protect that and wants to maintain the look of Carmel. So, there was a point of difference on how we should develop and maintain the forest over time by species. And so, I think that that specific recommendation from Davy was, I don't want to say completely discarded, but was set to the side. It was also pointed out that it would be very, very helpful to have a local ecological expert deeply involved with our program, and that's where we had Nikki as a resource to the city, and she graciously agreed to step in and help with the drafting to reflect the unique character and aspects of Carmel. But I would say if you compare, like, the goals, for example, you know, there was probably three-quarters of what was in the Davy report in the goal section was maintained and pulled through into what you see now. It was just updated to reflect the input from the community survey and from our public constituents who had specific ideas about how to make it unique to Carmel as opposed to a generic city plan.
Yeah, so the very, the large format document that was sent by Davy, a lot of it was towards the end, kind of some fluff. There was the results of the survey, there was the full tree inventory, and in the two-day, kind of knock-down, drag-out meeting we had, all we focused on were the goals and objectives. And we carried that through to make what we want to have, you know, be the meat of and the body of the new plan, and then, like I said earlier, we can add the appendices or the preambles as we need to make it tailored to Carmel, but really, the goals and objectives are really what we want to get out of this process.
But in fairness, there were some misses. One miss was the recommendation that the tree species be dramatically diversified. That was one point of difference. And I think the second was...
Although science-based, and there are several beetles coming from Southern California that specifically attack oaks, and I want everybody to be aware of that.
Right, so I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
Forty percent of the forest, and the gold-spotted oak borer and the polyphagous hole borer are coming.
Right, so that was just, but it was a point of difference during that session. The other was the tree list. Remember the trees they gave us? It was...
Oh, yeah. Hundred trees.
It was not really appropriate, so it was more like a tree list that there was, we had a lot of impact that was not the deal.
I guess it's an interesting question that happened, we can take it offline, honestly, which is why was there such a big mess between Davy and produce and what we were expecting? And we'll, we can talk it offline.
And you know, just as a point of reference, I think it all gets down to the urban forest perspective versus the urbanized forest perspective. And I think where Davy was coming from was more of the urban forest perspective. That's their expertise, working in communities where trees are placed as opposed to a community which was placed into a forest. And I think that was Davy's, their shtick, you know?
Why did we hire them then? Just, it's...
It was a big mistake.
A hundred and sixty thousand dollars makes a...
Yeah, I don't think that, because when I first became part of the steering committee, I thought we were going to steer the management plan. But it was basically just with Davy, it was just like a thirty-minute interview and then basically no contact whatsoever. And I'm afraid that sometimes this can be the same, where we might have this meeting and somebody, like Nikki's draft, I never saw it, the appendices I've never seen, I've never spoken to Ken regarding it, yet I'm part of this steering committee. I get, I make comments once things are done, but as far as steering the plan, you know, I'm not really involved. And we have to make some things clear to the public. Why are those recommendations for urban forest so important to urban forest? And why we're not going to follow them? Because if we do get the beetles that Justin is talking about, and they disseminate one tree or another, we have to answer to the community and say, we were advised not to have so many oaks or even pines, but we decided not to go with that recommendation, and now that's why we're suffering. If you go down to Cambria, you can see what's happened to the Monterey pine there. You know, it's not the same as it was, you know, thirty years ago.
As a result of the, that disease?
Yep. I would just say, I was reading something about that beetle, and, tell me if I'm right about this, Justin, there was some notion that that beetle is unlikely to come up as far, simply because of climatic conditions, that it doesn't tend to...
Basically, all of ours is Santa Maria.
Yeah. It's in, oh, okay.
City Moore's Oaks.
Uh-huh, okay. So, it's already here?
In the north. He lives in San Diego, and he moved all the way up. He's in San Jose about a year ago, Sarah said, and since then.
Yeah.
So, that's new information since last fall. That was not part of the conversation last fall.
So, so, is it, does it have a climatic? I mean, we are, we have such cool temperatures here, I'm just wondering if that would have some mitigating influence on it.
So, I want to bring this back to today's meeting. I know we talk about what happens in the past and ask a lot of questions, but we're here today. Were there missteps in the past? Sure. Were there, turn left, turn right? But here's what we have right now, and how do we move this forward? How do we get so that my team and I can implement? And that's what's the key. This plan has to be something I and Carmel by the Sea Public Works can implement. And so, that's what I'm trying to focus in on. How do I, how do I see my team and myself in this plan? Lot of history, like I said earlier, there are some history and ecology that we need to put back into this plan. That's why this is just the draft, but this was more of the action part of the plan, that I want to have this conversation. And this is not, again, this is not a one-and-done meeting right here, so don't feel like, oh my God, if I don't get something in, we're going to lose out. But also, we've got to get out of the analysis paralysis and out of the question mark and into the action, because that's what's important, not, not what's the verb and adjectives we use, but what is it we're going to do? So, I'll let you take, oh, public comment. Think we want to do any public comment?
Yeah, can I ask one question? Do you think, and I'm not sure if you can hear at all, since Nikki just gave her presentation, should we just focus on if there's any further questions for Nikki and then go into public comment, or...
If there's any further, sure.
Okay, since we're fresh with that. Maybe I can start with a question that I have, sort of at the very end of your presentation, and it's a topic that we've been talking about, about the loss of the Monterey cypress. You had mentioned that their lifespan is about one hundred years, so we're seeing, I'm sorry, pine, pine. And we're, we are seeing that in the city, and we're seeing loss of that, and we're trying to determine places that we can grow these, and we understand that they grow better in groves, and what would be your suggestion, knowing the constraints of our city and the design of our city? Where would you recommend that we plant groves of the Monterey pines?
Okay, so, the fundamental question is, does the city of Carmel want to maintain its community within a Monterey pine forest or within something else that's more of an urban forest? And I'm of the mind that the city should try to maintain the ecological functionality of the Monterey pine forest in which the community has been placed. I think there are opportunities to plant trees. I hesitate to encourage the city to plant in the existing natural areas like Mission Trail Nature Preserve, where natural processes and natural adaptation and the development of trees in a natural setting, all by themselves, is a preferred way to go, because they then develop the adaptations that they need to, rather than planting there. So, rather than augmenting those groves with planted trees, let them do their thing. Let them thrive without invasive species, without a lot of manipulation, but create the opportunity for trees to recruit naturally, because they're the best adapted. Now, where can the city plant other trees? Well, certainly in city-owned property, medians, in between roadways, there are opportunities even in the city center, in the little, you know, square holes that are in the sidewalks. But it has to be a proactive kind of approach. When a tree gets really old and becomes potentially hazardous, I'm okay with taking it out in advance of mortality and replacing it with a Monterey pine. It's more of a challenge in the private portions of the community, where now house size has become so large that there just isn't space in people's yards, even though there is a requirement to replant in kind theoretically, if given that...
It's a suggestion that's not a requirement.
Yeah, a suggestion then to plant in kind when pines and oaks are removed, but there's less and less space to do that. The Davy report did have a map of suggested potential planting areas, and I think that should be revisited and looked at in a very critical way, to see whether there are places within the city that Davy identified that, yeah, you know, let's put some more pines here. But in the natural areas, like Mission Trail Nature Preserve, I wouldn't go planting a bunch of pines, because you want that natural habitat to evolve its own adaptations and then act as a core for other trees than to be, you know, the genetic genesis for other outplantings perhaps. Yeah.
Can I ask you one follow-up? Any other park, thank you, any other park areas, Forest Hill or Devon Dorf, any other open spaces within the city that you would recommend if you're concerned about the Mission Trail Nature Preserve, because it already has its own, its own population there?
Yeah, you know, I don't really know the other parks, Tamara, unfortunately. I don't, I don't know how Forest Hill Park has been managed.
Intensively.
Yeah, intensively, Justin says, but potentially, yes, that's a place.
Forest Theater.
Forest Theater, okay, yeah. There are places, and again, the Davy map or the Davy diagram of potential planting areas should be really looked at with a critical eye.
And there are medians, too.
Yeah, I mentioned medians. But one, one, just a second, okay, Ken?
Are you going to have public comment?
Yeah, just a second, let me...
Q and A, or we're going to be Q and A now, just to hear Nikki and her presentation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we will have it.
And then, and then public comment.
I do want, I want to go just quickly back to, remember, only about a fourth of our trees are pines, and the oaks are still by far the dominant, so let's not try to make our forest something that it isn't now, and what, you know, we don't agree on what it was in the past, but we do know what it is now. So, I think we have to be careful about, we want pines, and I, we want them to be as safe as possible, for sure, since that's an issue. Are we ready for public?
I have a question. Is public allowed to ask questions with Nikki? Yes. I have a little short list. I apologize in advance, it's quite a list. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for getting us into this science discussion in the first place. I think personally, having been around the block in Carmel, we will be much more likely to reach agreement and consensus and embrace the action plan that Ken so vehemently is anxious to get to if we lay the...
if we lay the foundation for a common understanding of the science. And I just really appreciate that this group has taken us in that direction. To that end, I think there's a little bit of a missing link still, at least in my mind, between the research we're starting to hear about now and the action that we want to get to, that lays that consensus framework of information. So one thing I wanted to ask is, and I'll just ask these all, and then I come right... She's getting out her pen. Do we already have an analysis? And again, because I know there's information that hasn't been released yet, that, to other people's points that Nikki has done, about the scientific pros and cons of different plant species? In other words, we started with this millennium-old forest, but maybe there's some things that need to be managed differently from that native ecology? What are those variations? And in the plants themselves, and what are the advantages? You know, pro and con for sort of like, for example, subbing out a native species for another species? So I would like us to be very careful about that, and I don't know if that's done yet. So that's a question for Nikki. Similar question for Nikki is, has it been... Have we yet done the science, the research, that people are sort of fighting around the edges of already in this conversation of the composition, the clumping, the dispersing, the amounts? Once we know what's supposed to be here, what is the opt... How do we optimize where it's supposed to be? And how much? And at what age? And all that? Has that been done? And I don't know the answer to that. Thirdly, bugs have been mentioned already. And then during her presentation, Nikki said, "We'll be careful about bugs, because sometimes the guys that are getting attacked by bugs know exactly what to do. We just have to give them time." So my question there is, do we know how to heal? Like, when I get sick, in fact, I've got something I got at the doctor tomorrow. I mean, I hope nobody murders me because I'm sick. So we don't just clear-cut because I'm sick. We heal. And if we can heal these... What is the approach for healing, rather than panicking and ripping out? I don't know if we know the answer to how we deal with these threats for particular plants as they are threatened. Just one more. Do we have any science on... I mean, you went through such a beautiful explanation, Nikki, of the appropriateness of this particular original stand of trees and ecology to its soil, to its ladder, all this stuff I didn't know. I'm very... Until very recently, I was in the "I like green" camp. You know, I really didn't know all this. So I really appreciate learning, like, getting intellectual about it. And so I didn't know if we already had the information, the research about whether there are any management advantages, action plan advantages, to preferring the species composition that was here originally? In other words, would it be easier to manage a forest that was, at least from Mother Nature, considered to be perfect for this climate and soil type? Or, again, that goes back to the plant list question. Or when... How do we justify, from a management standpoint, the deviations from that? I just don't know if it's easier or not. So those are... Sorry, that's a long list.
Yeah, I wrote them down.
Okay, a lot to unpack there. First question, is there any scientific analysis for what plant species are best? And fundamentally, it depends on what your goals are. What is the foundation of your thinking? Do you want to promote biodiversity and native insects and pollinators? Or do you want to have flowering plants that are not native? Fruit trees or vegetables? So it fundamentally depends on what your goals are. If your goal is to try and enhance native habitat, then natives are the way to go, planting native plants. There are tremendous benefits. They are adapted to the habitat already and to the soil and to the rainfall regime. They are going to support pollinators and birds. And it's a choice to make as not only a community, but as individuals. You know, I have things in my yard that are not native. I live in Carmel Valley. I have... I love cactus. I have a lot of cacti. I have five different species of cypress, just because I think cypress are fascinating. Are they native there? No. But I have a lot of other native plants, because those are best adapted to my local parcel of land, as well as I feel it's important to promote birds and pollinators and whatnot. So...
Depends on the goals?
It depends on your goals, fundamentally. And as a foundation for this community, your goal has to be, do you want to promote the native forest and all its attendant biodiversity? Or do you want to have something different that's easy to manage? You know? You can have Italian cypress, easy to manage. But is that what your community wants to have? Just because it's easy to manage? So is there any science on where to put plants? On optimizing the location of plants? If you're dealing with natives, then that science is done for you, yes. The California Native Plant Society has website data on what grows here. And you can go to your property and identify what does best there. It's very easy to use. You can look at the Western Garden Book, you know, if you want to know your plant zone and what other things that are not necessarily native would grow in your local area. So there's science there, yes. You had a really interesting question about how to keep the forest healthy when invasive insects, pathogens are on the verge of causing damage. And I think the key to that is keeping your forest as healthy as you possibly can. Keeping your forest areas as native as you possibly can. Because those native plants, in their native habitats, growing in a healthy way, are going to provide a certain amount of automatic adaptation. Yes, you will lose some. But if you go into, say, Mission Trail Nature Preserve, and you start adding plants that aren't necessarily native there or are not from the local genetic stock, if you keep manipulating an area, you open it up to becoming less adapted to deal with those problems that are inevitably going to come on the horizon. So last question, do we have science on appropriate management advantage for, say, an urban versus an urbanized forest? Again, depends on your goals. There are lots of good management plans for urban forests. Not so many for urbanized forests. And for Monterey pines, here in California, they only grow in three places. And the only really urbanized settings are Monterey and Cambria. Cambria is at the southern distribution of its range. Monterey pine is more challenged there, because it is hotter and drier and more fragmented. The Monterey areas...
I understand you don't have it, but does that mean we could have it? We could develop it? You're just saying it doesn't exist yet, because the urban forest is all over the country. And we're special.
We are special. That's exactly right.
Is it something science could develop for us?
Yes, but it's going to be complex, because it would involve a lot of local analysis that I'm not sure there's funding to do. But the city of Carmel has a good track record, mind you. So it is on its way to creating a defensible forest management plan for an urbanized forest. It has a good track record. Yeah.
I think we're good for... I was just going to say, we can start just doing public comment right now. And instead of you going on, everybody going on up, I can walk around, hand the microphone. No, this is fine.
I don't need that.
You sure?
No.
Well, we need... The people need to hear recording, that's why.
Okay. I'm Ken White.
Three minutes.
You can't give me three minutes, I'll tell you. I was really worried with the beginning of this meeting and where I was going. And all of a sudden, toward the end, it began to come together to five people that they got a job to do, and I think your common sense is going to take you to the right spot. I was in the Forest of Beach Commission in the eighties. All we had to do was tell the person you could cut a tree or couldn't. "We can't plant there because there's view." "Move a house over to get away from that damn tree." "Save it." "And you can't arch over roots and build a house." Those were the big things we did. Now, I said one time, "We got our act together, so talk about other things that would help the city." We got some support on the subject, the city hall, and we went to work on it. You know what their project was? The beach walkway. Five, seven at the time. Gathered acts together. I said, "There are things we can do. That's a forest management plan." So if you get together and do that, and get rid of all the hot air, and get rid of the expert studies of people that don't live here telling you what to do, maybe it ends up to come up with a plan. Do it. Don't keep talking about this, that, and the other thing. Get your act together. In the last five, 10 minutes, I thought, "By God, they're coming back together again." Don't float away again. Get your act together and get on with it.
Thank you, very good. Anybody else have a public comment?
Hi, I'm Kristy Ramers. Thank you. I'm going to sit. I have to go in a little bit, so I just wanted to say that I'm truly grateful at the direction of the conversation. I also came a little bit worried. And I know in our community meetings, it was really important to have science. And I'm so grateful that Nikki is part of the conversation. I did have one question as well in reading that there's a thought to have a maintenance of 35% canopy. And I wondered if you, Nikki, feel that that is a healthy percentage for the forest?
Um, so, thanks. Nice to finally attach a name and face. So I think the Davy data collection resulted in coming up with that number, 35 or 6% canopy coverage.
Yeah, we're 36 now.
36.
Now, and then the goal is 35, to maintain more.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it could be higher. I personally would like to see it higher. I don't think all parts of the city can support that. So it has to be something that depends on the character of the location of that part of the city. But in general, I think that number can be increased. And it would help.
I do want to mention, I think we need to also be thinking of a balance between views and the trees. We live on one of the most beautiful coasts in the world, actually. We used to be able to see a lot more of it. And we could have set aside places where it could be seen more, rather than trees. We've lost most of our view, actually.
Could I just add a little? You know, Carmel is the only place where you can see the ocean through the pines and the oaks.
But you can't see them now very much, though.
But it's so beautiful when you... Well, that's a favorite view, though.
Anybody? Yeah. I'll come over to you.
What's your dog's name?
This is Bubbles, tiny Bubbles. And very supportive of trees and hydrants. Thank you. Well, I'm a newbie here. I haven't... I think I've been to one other meeting over the years, but in terms of forest and beach. My concern from other perspectives in Carmel, I guess, is what has been mentioned about houses getting larger and larger, more and more coverage of the lots, even though we do have requirements. It's just amazing that it's only 45% of the lot, which sure doesn't look like when you get the decks in and so forth, which, of course, impinges on our forest. Also, the ADUs that are now becoming more and more prolific. And those really have very few regulations at this point. And I think that's one of the biggest threats to our pine and native tree forest. So maybe that's something, you know, I would love to see less lot coverage requiring less lot coverage of buildings so that our forests can thrive.
Hold on to your... I'll take the mic.
Was there somebody else before me? I'd just like to say today that there was a great deal of consternation in the village about this meeting and how it would go, especially because we had no report from Nikki, and Nikki wasn't, you know, scheduled to be here. So I'm thrilled to see you here today, Nikki. Your presentation was fantastic. I do think, however, though, we need a written report. She is a consultant. We had a report from Davy, which was rejected for many reasons by the public in general after two meetings. And since she's a paid consultant by the city, she should have equal, not just this one-time shot in front of us, but we ought to have a paper report from her that we can read, digest, and have available to us as we go through this process. I am extremely process-oriented, as some of you know. And I like to see things done the right way. We need maximum community input. And we didn't simply have enough time, 10, 12 days, to ask the public to get a hold of a draft report and comment on it and fit it into their schedule is simply not enough. We're talking about very complex issues. We want them based on science, accurate scientific data, so we can make our very best decisions about what we're doing. And that was made very clear by the public at the two meetings last year, which were outstanding meetings. They were well-planned, well-thought-out, and they were very well-attended. But that requires adequate public time to read and respond. It also requires that we have enough lead time for people to make quality observations and decisions. So our project, I see, with the master plan is, number one, to protect; number two, to preserve; three, to maintain, not in any necessarily, you know, the same order that I'm mentioning, preserve, protect, enhance the forest, and maintain the forest. And our biggest problem has been the lack of attention to the forest for quite a number of years. And we're trying to catch up with that. And I think we've got an excellent public works director who's going to help us, and our new forester. We've got Justin, who's doing a great job. And I think between the two of them and all of you sitting around the table, that we're going to come up with a really excellent plan. But it has to be based on science. It has to be, you know, appropriate for the climatic conditions that we live in and recognizing that we are not like just every other place in California or the country, as a matter of fact. We have very unique climate and habitat. That has to be recognized and appreciated. That has to be recognized and appreciated and properly protected. So those are my comments. Thank you, Ken.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Bubbles answered.
I'll process through the two. And so I kind of wanted to... How do I ask this? And I may be stepping into this. I may, this may be naive on my part. This document should be goals and objectives, kind of high-level, what we want, right? And I agree with what you said, preserve, protect, et cetera, as opposed to how we do it, specific detailed values, for example. And so from my point of view, I mean, I look at this meeting as we're not going to solve all the detailed questions right here. Okay, so we're in alignment there. You know, part of my goal here is to get us a forest master plan, which is kind of the high-level document, right? And then we can follow up with the gory details, et cetera, et cetera. And I just kind of wanted to make sure that I was in alignment with what you just said.
Yeah, it is. The process that I'm talking about is, as I mentioned, at the Forest and Beach Commission. Number one, when we were talking about this meeting, I brought up, where's the steering committee in all of this? Well, and I got these strange looks going around the dais. And so what I'm talking about process is that at key stages, people have to be brought into the process. It's not just a question of writing a document that has all the goals and policies. It has to have a framework, and it has to have sufficient public interest, information, and involvement. And when I don't see that, like, there was no report from Nikki. Well, how do you have a consultant without a report? And a report that was given to us in a timely fashion? And because that was key to what we said last year. You weren't here, so you don't understand. But what we did last year is we had a major workshop, major, major workshop with over 65 people, and some key points came out of that. And so out of that came that we wanted Nikki to do a scientific report for us on the history and the ecology of the forest, and also a plant list that would be appropriate to our native habitat here. And so when we start talking about this meeting, and that report from a consultant that the city paid for was not involved in any of the paperwork, and was not invited until yesterday, you know, I began to have real deep concerns about the process and the way things are going. I don't think we should be steamrolling this, and I don't think the chair wants to steamroll it. I think that all of you want to do a really good job of this because we're probably going to have it around for quite a few years, and we want to do it right. So I think that it's come out fine, the meeting, because we had Nikki here, and we're going to, you know, go through this plan. But we have to have, you know, a philosophy about where we are as a community, where we want to go, and then that makes it very much easier to get to the end of this plan that we want to develop. I'm sorry it takes so long.
No problem. Did you want a comment?
I just wanted to say that I think Nikki spent quite a bit of time, and a lot of her work is reflected in the plan that you have in front of you today. And just by way of process, our steering committee can only meet in a forum just like this, where the committee comes into a public workshop. And so when this meeting was calendared, I believe, I could defer to Tamara here, but when this meeting was calendared, it was to include our steering committee and Nikki always. So I'm not sure where that misperception has come, but Nikki's a part of our group, and she's absolutely a huge contributor to the draft plan you have in front of you. I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Neal was saying a minute ago. I think it's really important that we focus today, if possible, on agreeing, like, the overall goals and objectives. I think a lot of the comments about, that we're hearing about science, really are going to guide the implementation, which is the how we do it, not what our goals are. And I would say, by way of example, when it comes to the trees, you know, in the very first goal and the very first bullet, it now describes a prioritization of native species and sourcing from local genetic stock. That is a direct improvement and build on what the original plan was, and was a consensus from our meetings last year, that Nikki helped pin into this document. So I think as we go through this, we actually will see that the goals and objectives, sure, this meeting is to discuss and add to it, but I think there's a lot in here that's a significant improvement from where this started, and I think if we could separate the goals from the implementation in today's meeting, that would be a useful process step.
Yeah, I was just going to add one thing. It's the difference between a prescription and a direction, and this is a directional document, not a prescriptive document.
Yeah, and just to give everyone a little bit of background, I did submit a draft of the document, and it has been shortened and made more concise in some ways that I really like. But there were also, like I mentioned, five or six appendices, one of which is a synopsis of the presentation that I made today, so the historical and ecological context. And not only that appendix, but the suggested tree list and a whole long section in another appendix about the benefits of trees. So that information is part of the document, but as an appendix. And I think first and foremost, the directional document here can be improved by having, at the very beginning, this is our goal, to maintain the integrity of the native minor pine forest, something like that. And I think that then will set the tone for everything.
I think you had a comment.
Oh, I was just going to actually say something.
Oh. Okay, cool. Any additional also public comment before?
Thanks, Ken. I carefully categorized questions from comments, so that's why, so I could have more airtime, so apologies in advance. So here's my comments. First of all, I was very struck in Nikki's presentation by two things that were more surprising. First of all, the variety and color and beauty that's available in these orchids and all these things. I think we, those of us who just like green, think, oh, just, I want some pretty color here and there, and how wonderful would it be for us to all understand what is available to us within the palette of the natives? So I think there's a big educational component that would help everyone in this community be very excited about this direction that you all are going. Secondly, I was very struck by, in her presentation, the preservation zones that you had mapped out that are, so we all are part of this apparent, you know, ancient ecosystem, and certain areas around the county or the peninsula have gone the next step to do preservation officially and protection officially. And it made me think that there was a leadership opportunity here that hadn't occurred to me before. And I don't want to sound like I'm tooting the community's horn here, but we are just on the verge of submitting a housing plan that has been, is considered by the state to be groundbreaking, and they are pointing to Carmel-by-the-Sea to say, and to much of the embarrassment, this was said last night at the meeting, of other communities, why aren't you doing it like Carmel is? And what I think, when I think of Carmel, I think of an enclave of brilliant, engaged, intellectual people, and I think that's borne out in this room today. And so I think, what an opportunity, now that Nikki has told me, for the first time I've ever heard this, when she answered my question, do we have a model for native pine forest management plans? And she's saying, no. So I'm thinking, how can we? What an amazing thing, if we could come together, I don't mind being part of fundraising, whatever we need to do. I think it could be a public-private partnership to actually be leaders in the world, like we are leaders for the state of California on the housing thing. So I think that's my, that's what I get excited about. But then, two just comments to things that just like, because there are a couple of questions I can answer. The ADU thing that Carol brought up, because I'm involved in the housing thing, I know that there's some good news on that front, which is that the coastal commission, the state has found that the coastal act protects Carmel from the entirety of the square mile. We do not, we cannot be pressured by the state to increase square footage on our lots. The coastal act trumps that. So just so you know, that is the current thinking. It is the way in which the housing plan is proceeding. It was not known when the ADUs started invading, but it is now known, and it's been, that information was presented by staff. Secondly, last comment, the green belts, a lot, we discussed this in the design steering committee. Many of us probably don't realize this, that the public right-of-way in almost all our streets is like 30, 40, 60 feet wide, and the part that we have paved is 10 feet wide, 20 feet wide, and all the rest of that. The reason that Devendorf did that was so that we could meander around the existing pines and the existing trees. So to create the illusion, I used to have a relative who'd come here and go, I'm so confused by this curvy street grid. I'm like, it's not curvy. That's the genius of it. It looks curvy, but it's actually a street grid that then winds around within this very large public right-of-way. And just so you all know, that is not at threat of having spatial incursions. That is preserved land. It is a green belt park system that goes through our entire community, and it is just as available to us for this type of, you know, we're concerned about the overbuilding, et cetera. That part will never be built on. So it is a linear park system that runs through our entire community, and I would encourage us to think about that as locations as well.
Okay, that's great. Great comments, great feedback. I really appreciate that, everybody. I think we'll take it to the, here we have time. So we're going to take a break. The committee, we have lunch for the committee members, but we'll be back. How long should we take here? 30 minutes, is that funny? I can read five, but 30 minutes. All right. I think this is on, is this on Zoom? Yeah, this is on Zoom. Right? No public, yeah. Is this on Zoom? Yes, it's on Zoom. No public comment.
No public comment.
Reese, are you back yet?
Great discussion this morning, everybody. I really, really appreciate everybody's input, thoughts, and revisiting. And I think what's been the challenge is, we had a pause for some time in between the last time we all got together, which was before my days, and now. And then it's like, well, how, why are we here? And how we got here? And there's, you know, new people in, in, on the group. But here we are now, right? And we want to move this forward. And how do we get it to the finish line? And it doesn't mean today is the day we get it to the finish line. Today is the day we progress towards that finish line. One thing I also want to remind everyone, we have this room until two. So, you know, we'll be mindful of the time and reminding. And if, if need be, we can have another one of these, right? This is not the one and done. But to me, if we have another one of these, we should have it sooner rather than later, instead of waiting too far down the line. But we've been taking notes on information that everybody's been providing. I've been listening. I have these key bullet points and that we want to, you know, any updates and touchpoints. I talked with Nikki about the history and ecology of the stuff that we have in the paper, but that's a truncated version of it. What do we want to put in there and put it in an appendix? I want her to look at that. And so we can add that and build this, this plan out and get it out to the committee to review from that. And then we can continue on from there. So with that, I don't want to take the mic too long. What's our next step here?
We're going to start going over the goals and objectives. How did we do it last time? Did we have each people go on and go around and read one? Or then input? Yeah. It doesn't have numbers. It's the number four.
Should we beat down the goal?
Yeah. So.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
I have a question really about, or introduction to the background, mission section. Let's come on and make a comment. I know that's going to grow a bit, support it. What I have in terms of helping to drive to completion of this, give a budget. Oh wait, Sarah. Give, so this is in regards to the background, mission, introduction section. I know that's going to grow a bit. Nikki's going to be some of that. Personally, I'm fine with shorter documents rather than larger documents. You know, I've looked at five or six different forest management plans from Los Angeles, San Francisco, Pleasanton, San Jose, Los Angeles, Central California. I've seen them from 272 pages to 12 pages of the script. One, if we can keep documents short, better, especially because people will read it, right? People are not going to read 270 page documents. And in that regards, maybe we give a budget to Nikki for the background and context section. To give 10 or 15 pages, right, to add to the document. And here's kind of the timeline to get it done. And that may help, kind of like, put a value box and stuff, make sure we're fully, just kind of let's get that, that part.
Just to take this on briefly, there's a whole appendix based on the material that I presented. So it's already done. And the original draft did have an introductory section. So it's just a matter of maybe buffing it up and putting it back in. So it's, we're there.
Goals and objectives. Goal number one.
Goal number one, proactively manage public trees and forest resources. To ensure long for, long-term forest sustainability, the city must move from reactive tree care towards proactive planned management. Proactive management helps mitigate risk, improve ecological function.
Got it. Thank you.
And maintain the urban forest structure and diversity. Table one at the end of the section summarizes the goals, objectives, actions, and how we would track our success. So, objective number one, under goal one, proactively managing public trees, is tree health and diversity. Maintain and periodically update the recommended species list. Prioritize native drought tolerant and climate resilient species supports prioritizing those species helps, supports biodiversity and ensures that planted trees can thrive under future environmental conditions. Sourcing from local genetic stock maintains ecological integrity and reduces disease vulnerability. Anybody have any inputs on those?
I think that's great. It's just that the words like periodically or prioritize, you know, they're not very specific. If you would say, you know, when are you going to update this? How often do you update this recommended species list? Prioritize, you know, I think if we decide, we want the pine tree percentage to be just like it was in the eighties, or 10 years ago, or whenever. So we have a number to work with, so that we kind of know when we're getting close to that number, not just we're planting pines, but, you know, so that somebody's accountable as to if we're reaching that goal. Because if it's just like a vague goal, you know, you don't know when you get there, or how far along you're.
Can I just ask a question too? I have two kind of related. So, one thing in the Davy report that's missing that didn't follow through is kind of this overall vision. The one comment I had on the first goal was, I think this is supposed to be timeless, like this is supposed to be the policy document hopefully for five or 10 years, right? Like this is at least 10 years to, our guiding document. So in the first goal, I wondered if we should remove the reactive. I know that we're reactive now because we're playing catch-up on a lot of the deferred maintenance, but I wonder if we should just be asserting the proactivity, right? We need a proactive, we need a proactive plan management plan. And for right now, part of being proactive includes our deferred maintenance catch-up plan where we're still a bit reactive, but I'm not sure I would highlight the reactive to proactive because I think we're, the goal here is to be proactive. And we've had some reactivity in our past years, but I don't know that we need to point that out in the goal. Out would be my suggestion.
Thank you. So, so I agree, Harry, with what you said about prioritization, but if we have four or five goals-ish, I'm okay with not having priority, but I hear what you're saying. I wanted, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Peter. I wanted to comment what you said, which is, I agree with you that we need measurable, you know, goals to achieve things. To me, the goals are the what, the aspirational, and we should strive to keep specific values out of the high level goals. Objectives can address measurable things, right? And to that end, I think we should also just call out that everything does need to be measured and monitored and collect data. And I almost feel like pull that into a separate section outside of the goals, which says, for everything, we're going to measure, right? We're going to have clear numbers if it makes sense for that to establish this stuff, et cetera, et cetera. I feel the same way about technology. You know, technology is going to permeate a lot of the detailed things that we do. I don't know if we need to call out something specific, right? So those are my comments on that. And, you know, we'll definitely, we should definitely address the, you know, numerical values that we should strive for in a separate document, you know, when we're trying to achieve something.
Well, either it's a appendix or it's just your annual action plan that accounts for this.
Right, and that we can measure against and hold accountable against, absolutely.
And those would be numbers that would be in the implementation plan that we would measure against. So for example, I thought the, like, the sourcing of genetic stock was great. You know, I know, I know, Justin, that you talked about, we've got a nursery somewhere where we're growing Monterey pines from small scale, but that strategically, right? That fits exact beautifully with what Nikki shared this morning. And so I'm just wondering, I think that's an implementation plan, but specifically on Monterey pines, do you want to have a goal of X percent of your pines planted in the city come from your, whatever that nursery is? It would help you, I don't know if that's a good thing or bad thing. It's not for this, it's more for the implementation.
Right.
That's in.
Yeah.
The genetic stock?
And we do source from a local genetic stock nursery, but the problem is, they don't always have the pine trees, so.
So is the intent here for us to be common when you take that and roll it up and cover it? Exactly. So, so far, you know, on goal one, we have some great, some great feedback already. And, you know, moving out 1.3, 1.4 outs and just focusing on actually the forest resource that forests themselves as opposed to the staffing, equipment, and technologies that could be something we can create on the outside. Is everybody good so far? Now, remember, if you don't have, I mean, sometimes when you go, at the end of the day and you're like, oh crap, I forgot to mention this, that's why we have email. Email us, we can look at that and see how we can incorporate where we can.
Would it be appropriate in one place to make a mention or include the collaboration with, like, PG&E utilities and public services? Because we have a lot of city trade impacts from PG&E on past.
And actually the fire department.
And the fire department.
And the fire department.
Maybe collaborate or do you have contact points? I don't know, do you have regular meetings scheduled with how many annual, do we have like quarter meetings?
Under risk and maintenance?
Yeah.
Is that something you would have typically done in other cities you've worked in?
I would have, I wouldn't have put that in a strategy, if that's what you're asking, but it should be part of, like, how do we, how do we work with our, not only our, yes, exactly.
Partners.
Partners and utilities and everything else that also touch our trees.
Can you just?
Yeah, I put it in a plan as a, as a high level, but not. Maybe a policy. Policy, yeah.
Can perhaps I mention one administrative thing, just for, for the public that's here? I'm assuming that we'll, are we going to allow one final public comment at the end of our meeting? Is that something? I just wanted to check in.
No, that's usually in the beginning of like.
We sometimes, our last one, we, we did do two public comments. And so just as they hear all that we're, we're talking about, if there's a final public comment, and we could actually look at and see if we have two minutes to give or three minutes to give depending on. Just, I just wanted to put that in.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Goal two, maintain a minimum of 35% canopy cover. Maintaining canopy cover improves air and water quality, reduces heat islands, and preserves the city's visual and cultural character. This goal focuses on optimizing space for planting and ensuring tree longevity. The objective and actions, strategic plant, strategic planting. Use data-driven tools such as Davey's planting model to identify priority planting areas, right trees, right place methodology. Prioritize and select locations that offer the highest environmental return, maximizes benefits like stormwater retention and shading. Legacy groves and parks and open spaces help reduce canopy loss to development.
Can we say anything about views? You know, the views, we've lost so many views and the views are part of Cornell.
Is that strategic? Is that part of the strategic that we plant them in places that are strategically, whether it's for?
Do existing views be considered or something like that?
PG&E can do that and 18 years is a view.
It's kind of like the goal for, the unique character forces, maybe more under forced character.
Yeah, and I think it might be an important thing to pull that out. As Sarah said, I know that that's almost like a bad word to say views, but it's, but it's not. But it's, but it's not. No, but I know, but I think we all have had that. We're not allowed, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, gosh, I'm going to go on record with that one.
One works in Zoom and one works in YouTube, so we need to be.
Okay, be consistent. So I think that that, that is something that is important for us to mention in our, in our strategic planting, that it is, that it is considered.
Recognizing viewpoints.
Mm-hmm. Just as where we're planting, that we're not under power lines and, you know, various things like that. Okay.
Let me see if I can ask it this way. It's interesting that a very specific number for the canopy was defined as a goal here. Maybe somebody could give me some context of how we got to that point, because it sounds like there's a lot of background information here. So our current canopy coverage is 36%, equal Palo Alto. And with the community's input of either too many trees or enough trees, Davey chose to go with status quo 35%.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is that, well, I mean, okay, I've just stepped into it a little bit here. A specific value of 35% for a goal seems odd to me. It seems like the goal should be establish and maintain a canopy coverage as defined for the city Carmel, as opposed to choosing a number right here, right now?
That's pretty.
And it begs the question, and again, I know I'm stepping into this because I'm sure there's a lot of background information here. And there's probably, you know, maybe there's even more discussion about this and details to figure out as opposed to choosing something from Davey and then putting it into a plan that's going to be 10, 15 years going forward. Does that make sense?
So we had, we did have, here's the slide. We did, this is one thing that Davey explored in the community survey, and it was asked two different ways. People were asked to respond about whether or not I believe Carmel has the right amount of trees, too many trees, needs more trees. And then also, I'd like to see Carmel's canopy cover be maintained, be increased, be decreased. And we saw, you know, nearly 45% of people, you know, right amount of trees. And then there was also, you know, 30, over 30, 35 to 40% saying we have too many trees and less than that, less than 20% saying we want more trees. So the goal, the, after the Davey, I think during that and then the last meetings last year, there was consensus around maintaining our current canopy was, was how we would proceed going forward. And so the 35% number was, was picked just because that's where, maintaining the current canopy maintains that coverage.
But maybe it would be better to, to say 30 or 30 or 235, something like that.
So one of the key components of this is when you start, and I agree with you, Neil, you bring up a great point. Okay, you say 35%. How are you measuring that? I mean, how are you gathering that data to say, we are making 35%? It's, you know, we're not doing LiDAR. And, and so it's like, how are we measuring that, right?
Do a satellite or something.
And is that, how accurate is that, right? I mean, I'm just, again, it's just, how do you measure that and ensure that you're at that 35%? Do we put a number in there or do we say, you know, maintaining, you know, something more generic and then try to strive for knowing that we want canopy? We don't want, you know, wide open spaces, but we also want canopy and, and the view sheds.
Maybe a balance between?
It's just a thought. Did you want to say something, Nikki?
Oh, yeah. The way I read this, it just says a minimum of 35%. That's the, that's what it is now. And not all parts of the community have 30, maybe some are more, maybe some are less. But generically, a minimum, and that's measured through satellite imagery.
I'd like to erase the minimum word. I, I mean, 35 is, is a lot and.
But that's what the community survey wanted.
I don't, I don't know if that's true. Is that?
That's just what Charlie said.
Yeah.
It's true.
The right amount of trees received the highest, the right amount of trees was in the 40, 45% categories and the too many trees was just over 35%.
Could I finish?
There was, there was a minority that said too few trees.
I mean, this, this has been, this has been debated extensively many, many times, and I think the consensus came around maintaining the current canopy. Part of the reason there was such vigorous debate was in the very first public meeting, well ahead, maybe a year before last October, when Davey presented a plan to increase the canopy, they showed a map and they filled every single available public space with trees. And that, you know, incited a really adverse public reaction, right? All the city right of ways, parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's where the consensus around maintaining the canopy was in part.
And you know, 35 then would have sounded like a small amount, so it, that percentage is, is maybe to be looked at.
I'd just like to say that from my old cottage, all of a sudden, the sun glares in the window and I have no curtains on my, on my window and I can, I have a cataract and my God, I have to seek refuge is just really, and that's just new because all the pines have gone from, from below my house. I'm on Lincoln Street and down there between.
You want to say something?
Thank you. And then Renee. But this is just while we're on the same topic. I had a community member ask, and I'm not sure, Nikki, if you know this, what are historic, what are, excuse me, historic tree canopy was, if we have any data or information?
Yeah. That's what's so challenging to figure out because at what point in time do you start to measure? You know, the earliest images we have are pictorial, they're, you know, people drawing. And there were a lot of pines, a lot of trees in general. The whole coastline was, was vegetated with trees. But the earliest photographs we have are of things like the Mission 100 years later where there's nothing. So the impact of humans and human activity really has influenced the look of the forest. So it depends on what timeframe you look to, to derive that value, how, what was the canopy coverage before?
Do we have anything on record about, what is the first record that we have of what are tree canopies? I'm just, if that was 10 years ago or at the last master plan 25 years ago.
You know, the earliest aerial photographs would probably show you that. I personally own some from the 1930s and there's a lot of trees, but maybe there's something earlier, so I'm not sure.
Is there any mention of this in the 2001 plan? Is the tree canopy discussed like we're discussing it now?
I don't remember. I don't remember. Here you go, Sarah.
But, but you know, that's really difficult because if the picture is from the side, it makes it look like it's totally covered by trees and if it's looking straight down.
That's why you need the aerial.
And besides that, what would more, or the. There was a minority that said too few trees.
I mean, this has been debated extensively many, many times. And I think the consensus came around maintaining the current canopy. Part of the reason there was such vigorous debate was in the very first public meeting, well ahead, maybe a year before last October, when Davey presented a plan to increase the canopy, they showed a map and they filled every single available public space with trees. And that, you know, incited a really adverse public reaction, right? All the city right of ways, parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's where the consensus around maintaining the canopy was in part.
And you know, 35 then would have sounded like a small amount. So that percentage is maybe to be looked at.
I'd just like to say that from my old cottage, all of a sudden, the sun glares in the window and I have no curtains on my window. And I can, I have a cataract. And my God, I have to seek refuge is just really, and that's just new because all the pines have gone from below my house. I'm on Lincoln Street and down there between...
You want to say something?
Thank you, and then Renee. But this is just while we're on the same topic. I had a community member ask, and I'm not sure Nikki, if you know this, what are historic, what are, excuse me, historic tree canopy was? If we have any data or information?
Yeah. That's what's so challenging to figure out because at what point in time do you start to measure? You know, the earliest images we have are pictorial, you know, people drawing. And there were a lot of pines, a lot of trees in general. The whole coastline was vegetated with trees. But the earliest photographs we have are of things like the Mission 100 years later where there's nothing. So the impact of humans and human activity really has influenced the look of the forest. So it depends on what timeframe you look to, to derive that value. How, what was the canopy coverage before?
Do we have anything on record about, what is the first record that we have of what our tree canopy is? I'm just, is that over 10 years ago or at the last master plan 25 years ago?
You know, the earliest aerial photographs would probably show you that. I personally own some from the 1930s. And there's a lot of trees, but maybe there's something earlier, so I'm not sure.
Is there any mention of this in the 2001 plan? Is the tree canopy discussed like we're discussing it now?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Here you go, Sarah.
But you know, that's really difficult because if the picture is from the side, it makes it look like it's totally covered by trees. And if it's looking straight down...
That's why you need the aerial.
And besides that, what would more, or the early time is a lot of the trees were smaller and you really do have, did have a lot more view.
Well, and this is just, it's a talking point now. So I'm curious what are we comparing it to? It could have been 25% in the 2001 plan, and we just don't know. So...
May I just say something to this? Because I have a quote here from Robert Tate, who was city forester in 1971. And he talks about, he talks about the trees, let's see. He says, "The area west and south of Ocean and Monteverde was for the most part not forested, but did support scattered trees." "The oldest tree I've found in this area was just under 70 years of age when it died. I suspect most of this area was covered by brush similar to that which grows just south of the Carmel Highlands."
So that would be chaparral, coastal scrub, right? And maritime chaparral, right? So, yeah, so he, that's what my father described too, was that that area was not forested. But then again, where we were, where Mary Austin's WikiUp was, she describes Carmel as mostly grown up thick with sea anothis, manzanita, and monterey pine. So the majority of the city was monterey pine, but it's just, it wasn't south, it wasn't west. It was, the western part was less vegetated with pines and more scattered.
And that's also, there's that book...
There's that book of photographs of Carmel that one of the Hudson's put together. And there's a photograph that describes exactly that, that as you go downhill towards the beach, there were fewer and fewer and fewer pines. And that makes sense, yeah. Back to Tamara's question though. One time point we do have, definitive time point, is associated with those pie charts from the 70s and the 80s and then now. And the composition of the forest has changed. You could sort of infer that the canopy has also changed in a commensurate way. Yeah.
Just trying to determine anywhere...
Just on that, just to answer your question, the 2001 plan, all it says is, "Maintain, restore, and enhance the upper and lower canopy of Carmel's urbanized forests." And then it says, "Implement adopted tree density policies for private and public property as appropriate to each site, taking into consideration neighborhood characteristics and site constraints." That's about all it says.
Okay. Thank you. Keep answering that.
I think one important point we also discussed previously was that maintaining the canopy, maintaining the current canopy is actually a challenging objective. Because when we look at the amount of trees on city versus public property, it's likely the tree recommendations per parcel will come down. We are seeing monterey pines, the older trees come down. They're, you know, they're not being replaced necessarily with four trees per lot. And if you, if we looked at, this might be a good topic for F and B at some point, if we looked at the last 25 remodels in the city and you looked at the number of trees per parcel, there's no way you can have something that matches the current recommendation, which is three upper canopy and one other tree. There's just not room. And it isn't just the building, the size of the structure. It's also these, the requirements for this water, these drainage systems where you end up with these elaborate, like rain gardens and these huge trenches. Right, but the rain garden, the water management off your roof takes up most of the available space within a parcel. And so I think as a practical matter, we should anticipate across this time, and I don't know where this fits in the plan. We should anticipate that we will see the number of trees per parcel on a 4,000 square foot lot decrease, right? And so that puts, this is why we keep coming back to the cities and being intentional, particularly about the monterey pines and the cypress specifically. And so I think maintaining the canopy is actually, it's an appropriate goal, but it's also an aggressive, it's a stretch goal, right? It's, this is not a, this is not a just slam dunk thing to achieve based on where we are point in time and how things will over the next 10 years.
Yeah, because it's very difficult to replace a large monterey pine. You could plant two, three, you'll probably have to plant 100 to replace the actual canopy. Because the tree is not going to be, replace that canopy for many decades. Would it be difficult to have an aerial evaluation of the canopy every year? So we know, if we're sliding down and losing a lot of canopy?
And that blocks the entire region every year.
Do we really need a percentage? You know, maybe it's so hard to have it be accurate anyway. But we haven't mentioned the conditions. They're saying five feet from your house, a tree should be, which on a 40 by 100 lot is going to really lessen what kind of trees you could have.
So bringing this back towards the Forest Management Plan goals, getting through that, you know, we can't be solving this problem right here, right now. So my question really is, given all the discussion around, you know, the side effects of managing a canopy and what Kelly said, et cetera, should the goal be reworded a little bit so that it captures everything here?
Yes. Just kidding. Make them run off.
Man, a few words.
Sorry. So, so that's a great point. So we're all here together, we got all these great minds here. What would be a recommendation? I look to this group as a way that it's captured, but it's not lost into us trying to be aspirational about something, you know, or trying to achieve something. It's like saying, hey, keep the lights on when you leave. I mean, that's nothing, but, you know, turning, right?
Establish, maintain the canopy per, you know, recommendations from the citizens of Carmel by the Sea, define strategy and requirements to support that. Blah, 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 something to that effect.
We have a point in time, if we say maintain the canopy, we know what the canopy is today. So in your implementation plan, you'll be measuring against that over time, right?
And our current city documents already have policies to recommend that when development happens or redevelopment happens, that you design the site so that there's open space contiguous with your neighbors.
And that's a great point. That kind of goes to what Kelly said, which is, based on all the new stuff, are those going to be impacted?
Right, well, hopefully, hopefully that's the place to plant trees.
That's the place, that's the place to plant a pine, is in that area that is open space contiguous.
And again, not trying to get into the details, but, you know, my comment would be, that's the implementation details we need to figure out at a future point. You know, if we can capture kind of the goal at a high enough level, it gives the guidance towards looking at all that stuff. I think that's kind of what we're trying to get here.
It's already in our city documents, so you don't have to look too hard.
No, those are, I think the point is those are going to need to be revised, Linda. They're not, they're out of sync. They're out of sync. They're not...
Are you talking about the per lot?
Per lot tree recommendation, yeah.
That's...
Right, right, right.
I would just say I agree with Neil in that I think putting the most kind of generic, maintain the minimum, maintain the coverage kind of that we have now, instead of putting a percentage, that 35% has always seemed kind of rando to me. Just like, okay, 35. And I think it is what it is, but... I know, well, I know, but to say that's the number is...
You could give current canopy a number and so 35.
Well, I think that's a good idea too, because if we go further to, two pages down where it talks integrate wildfire resistance to the forest management, that's going to change some things too. And as they get more clear on how they want the forest management to be, that's going to affect that.
Yeah, you can still have a large forest and a lot of trees and be healthy. Unless, you know, we're not clear cutting, right? And that's probably the first and foremost fire resistant thing you can do in a city, but that's not us. And so we can still have canopy, higher canopies, trees, and resilient forests. But going back to the goal, right? We're talking about 35%. We said, well, is that, is that the number? Or the comment was, what is our baseline? Just maintaining, well, we have that number, so maybe that's the number.
That's the number.
Which is what, 35% or 30?
It's 36 now, they threw out 35 to give some room.
That's a little bit less. And again, that doesn't mean every point in this city has to have 35%. It's just average for the whole city. So you could have more view sheds in certain areas, but also more trees in certain areas.
I've heard Nikki does want us planning the actual Mission Trail we should preserve, but that would be an area of higher canopy.
So we good on that? Goal number two? It's good conversation, this is what it's all about, weed it out.
What's one important...
Well, Kelly, do you mind if I interrupt? It's really important. I know you guys are passionate and want to say so much about everything that's going on, but the people on YouTube cannot hear and in Zoom. Yeah, but you have to speak into the microphone because they can't hear. And I keep getting comments. And it's just not picking up what these overheads and they're trying to fix it. Thank you, guys.
On goal number two, I think one thing that also came out of last year that we spent a lot of time talking about, that is silent in the goals, but will be in the implementation, is we discuss moving to nomenclature small, medium, and large trees and to move away from upper and lower canopy. And that that was more standardized. And so that the oak and the monterey pine and the cypress would all be large trees. So I think that's an implementation plan topic. But I think that that's, it will be important when we get to implementation because that also will have impacts on updating our policies that speak to upper, lower, which I think Davey had recommended we move away from. And I think the tree experts were saying that that's a more standardized nomenclature.
So I think on the objectives and actions, we have the strategic planting, which I just read. And then we have the private property engagement. That's somewhat of a new or expanded bullet there because, you know, as we talked about planting, people building and growing out, how do we engage and influence and help those who are, have their private properties want to plant trees and guide that conversation? And then, of course, 2.3 is canopy monitoring. It just kind of goes with what we were just all talking about. And then establishing measurable forest management goals. So it says here on 2.4, establish measurable forest management goals. A successful forest management plan requires more than vision. It must be measurable and accountable. It's important to transform this plan into action and results and to be transparent to build public trust. Actions include identifying target metrics, developing and publishing annual tree maintenance and planting targets, and improving accomplishment reporting and transparency.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with that, to the point where I think that should be pulled out. And that's a statement that all the goals need to address. You know, everything should be measurable, not just the canopy one. So I would consider pulling it out as a separate, it's not a goal. It is all the goals we're going to measure and have metrics, et cetera.
I just wanted to make a comment on canopy monitoring. Every five to 10 years, is that, is it possible to do it more frequently, like on an annual basis? I don't know what the cost is, but I would think that that might be part of a, something, a continuous assessment.
Very good point. I think the key, or what was considered by the five to 10 years is that when you start planting, it takes a little bit more establishment time. So that measure gets more tracked after a certain period of time. But, I mean, we can do this and say, hey, how are we looking over time? Because it is going to be a slow growth or slow management. We might have a dip because of tree removals, but then, you know, it's not going to, even if we replant, it's not going to be the same number coming back on the canopy percentage. It's just over time. That's a good point. Should we look at maybe, you know, every couple of years or something?
Every other year maybe.
Every other year, every two years? How's that, everybody? Okay, good point. Three to five? Three to five? Does that sound good? That's exactly what I was saying. Three to five? Do I have...
That's good.
Going once?
It's all good.
Okay. We're on to goal three.
All right, goal three, promote community stewardship and appreciation. A well-informed and engaged community is essential for sustaining Carmel's urban forest. By fostering a culture of shared responsibility, the city can extend its capacity and achieve long-term goals. Objective number one, public education. Provide educational materials about native species, proper tree care, and the ecological value of trees empowers residents to contribute meaningfully. Public outreach helps shift perceptions and behaviors towards stewardship.
I think we get that in spades from them. I think that's something that thankfully we have such an engaged community. I think that they're probably aware, but I think it's great to have it as a resource that we can offer out because we do have this. In fact, I wish that this, and I'm hoping from here on out, that our Forest Management Plan is something that's more accessible. Because I think that even on the Forest and Beach, we didn't get this early on when we became Forest and Beach Commissioners. And I think it's very useful. So I'm hoping that this plan can become something that's more utilized. And because it's been made so concise, and I know we're going to build on it, I think, I think it can be that, and so...
I also see that one as not so much existing residents, but when you first move to Carmel, there's a whole opportunity to really educate people just moving in about the ins and outs and trees and why it's so important. And to me, that also then starts to include not just kind of existing stuff, but I frankly think that presentation should be shown in the high school and the, you know, the elementary schools and, you know, that's...
And, pardon me, but also some sort of booklet to be given to new residents distributed by realtors, title insurance companies, just to educate people about Carmel and how different it is. Because if you're coming from an urban setting, you don't really know the history, you don't know how special it is, you kind of need to get up to speed. And something accessible, pretty lyrical, in Carmel style, you know, I think would be really nice to come up with.
Number two, formalizing volunteer engagement. Formalizing partnerships with groups like Carmel Cares and Friends of Carmel Forest allows the city to expand planting, watering, and maintenance activities. Designate a volunteer coordinator strengthens coordination and impact. That's something that Davey was pushing for and we've been needing. Because sometimes, you know, with some of these groups like Carmel Cares, that becomes a full-time job because they're so big and so many parts. A volunteer coordinator would be massive. And I know that the Friends of both Mission Trail and Carmel Forest are, you know, eager to get stuff done and there are, there's a lot of moving parts everywhere. So it's just, I think that we want to foster the relationships we have with all the organizations, Garden Club, everybody, and to just try to empower them to do more in the community. We've given Carmel, the Friends of the Forest, you know, planting locations and opportunities to put more trees in or help adopt the trees we planted. So we want, we want to, we align our goals and visions with the organizations around town.
That, or just a question just on that, is there some way, you know... Is there some way, you know, you hear about Carmel Cares and Friends of the Mission Trail getting all these grants? And it's probably because they have someone who knows how to do it. And could that even be something this person could take on in terms of helping the city get grants to spend for some of this? And that's kind of a volunteer and grant coordinator. Or we're not seen to be getting them, so I don't know what Carmel Cares does. I mean, that's why I'm saying, why can't the city do that?
The city's. I think that, I, I've seen several grants that the city has received. In the administrative processing, processing and reimbursement, we've not been able to get the money after it's been awarded. And so this goes back to program management. Harry, I think after multiple unsuccessful attempts to get the grants, where the city just ended up having to cover it, it somehow has become less a priority. But I'm fully with you. We should, if we're going to apply for grants, we need to make sure that we have the program management in place to actually utilize those grants. Because just getting them and having them sort of fail, if you will, repeating that isn't helpful.
Yeah, I agree. Having, even starting at a part-time job for somebody in the city, is that what you're talking about, Justin?
Full-time.
Oh. Yeah, 40 hours? Yeah. Yeah, it'd be great because then all the, all the groups can get together and be on the same page and help the forestry department. I agree.
Just a question, is this where people were thinking also the various partnerships with organizations like PG&E, Comcast should go in?
Very good point.
Yeah, because there is that kind of engagement also, formalizing partnerships.
Yeah, that, that, I think that would be a good, because 3.3 is a little reductive. This was written, the Davy part at least, and I don't know if this was pulled through, but like Tree City USA, that's already done. And we've been celebrating Arbor Day. Be nice to have a, its own, but with the coordination and management, we're just going together with Earth Day, and I think it's been really fun in the park. But I think maybe the 3.4, for something, not the necessarily volunteer engagement, but engagement with local, what would you call, agencies? So all the agencies, Cal Fire, TMC, PG&E, all of those local things to tie this in that just we have, kind of get, everybody's on the same page.
On that line, you know, there's, we have the city, which is our little one square mile, and then we have these contiguous areas of the Point and the, and Carmel Woods and up there. And that, none of this really ties in with that. Is there any opportunity to even involve the county in that kind of bigger tree management of our area of the peninsula? Because we don't, I mean, the Point technically, we're not doing anything with Carmel Woods, we're not doing anything with, on this. Mission Fields, we're not doing anything with. Is there some way to get the county, I guess would be the right, a coordinator who helps us do some of this stuff with the county? You know, I don't know.
That's a good question.
And, and these are great, these are great implementation conversations because my brain is already ticking like, how can I, what can I do to make something like this happen? And hearing all these little points of coordination and volunteer coordination and other agencies and even other jurisdictions, because we know fire and disease or anything else, there's no borders, right? So how do we build that? And it's like, this is a perfect opportunity for looking at the staffing part and say, we need a person that does this full-time. This is what they do, the whole outreach and coordination. Because I know he couldn't do it all by himself with everything else he's got on his plate. So we do need that position, so I'll help feed that. Hopefully, I'm not speaking.
Yeah, so the county's managed by the Carmel Area Land Use Plan, so that's separate. They have their own land use plan with their own tree regulations. Native trees, 12 inches or greater are protected. So that's just like Nikki was saying, we've, I've had knock-down, drag-out fights with the county over what's native, with biologists going to bat that the cypress isn't native because it's technically not native to this area. So it's, it's, you get into semantical battle, but.
Del Monte Forest also. Yeah.
Yeah, and Del Monte Forest, they have their own land use plan as well. And we, you know, we get, we work with Pebble Beach and the Del Monte Forest Conservancy. I go to the OSAC, the Open Space Advisory Committee, once in a while. And we're, we share responsibility in managing the Pescadero Canyon for fuel management.
I would just say, building on what Justin was saying, I think that our ordinances are tighter in our area versus our surrounding jurisdictions. And just as a point of information, the Monterey tree ordinances are up for public comment right now. The second community meeting is next Monday evening, October 27th at 6:00 PM. So I'm planning to attend that if any of you want to go, but just to hear what the county is doing. But I have noticed that their diameters are much, yeah, are, and, and the existing are less restrictive than what we have on Carmel presently.
Goal number four. This is kind of one that ties into a lot of the other ones. Preserve Carmel's unique forest character and natural resources. Carmel's forest is part of a rare coastal ecosystem that shapes the community's identity. Protecting its natural heritage requires thoughtful land use planning, code updates, and targeted conservation actions. So objective 4.1, habitat protection. Enhancing habitat connectivity through strategic plantings supports biodiversity and ecosystem health. Using native trees and understory species ensures continuity with the regional landscape and sustains pollinators, birds, and other wildlife.
Just one thing before I pass this, Linda. I would like to insert three words to this first paragraph. Carmel's forest is part of a rare coastal ecosystem that shapes the community's identity. Protecting this natural heritage and promoting biodiversity requires thoughtful land use. Let's put that in. Yeah. And, and under this possibly could be the idea of restoration projects. Restoration projects. You know, like restoration projects. Like, for instance, we, we, Carmel Cares funded and championed the pollinator corridor right down Ocean Avenue. But it wasn't actually composed of plants that actually would have been there or actually even probably been together in a native habitat. So you might want to find areas in town where you could engage the community and, and establish Monterey Pine Forest habitat as it actually would be, you know, kind of wild, what the old Carmelite used to call the rugged beauty, the rugged natural beauty. That's also something that might be an idea there under that.
Bear with me on this one, and it's kind of related to, Linda, what you just said. Walking up here this morning, I was thinking to myself, should there be a goal explicitly about Monterey, the Monterey Pine Forest here? In my time on Forest and Beach, I've heard a lot of implicit information about the Monterey pines and what we should do. I personally honestly cannot say I've heard anything explicit about what we should do. So my question really is, do we need to have, maybe it's part of this as an objective, billing out our strategy of what we're doing about the Monterey pines? I know there's a Monterey pine on my neighbor's property. I have a bunch in front of my house. I've heard talk about it's better to have them in a grove, for example. Nikki, you were kind of talking about they need to kind of like natively populate, et cetera. There's a lot of implications surrounding all that, you know, pruning of them, supporting whether they need to be replaced or not. What's the canopy if you replace them, et cetera? And I don't know if we've ever really come to a conclusion on what we should do here. And so the question I have is, should this be part of, as an objective in this goal, to go figure that out? So we have something explicit to go forward as opposed to just talking about Monterey pines? Good. And I want to have that discussion here.
It could be, it could be that the city could be mapped out as to the areas that would have been, that would, you know, if it were natural, be supporting, you know, oh, that would be, that would be supporting chaparral or coastal scrub or, and, and just sort of map, map the city out in that regard. Would that be possible, Nikki?
Yeah, we just don't have enough historical information to do that. We can guesstimate based on soils, but maritime chaparral and coastal scrub occur on really cruddy soils, as do Monterey pines. You could do it by the terraces, but as you know, there are Monterey pines down at the lowest level in the dunes at Assilimar. So it would be really, really hard to come up with what the historical vegetation was like. Almost impossible.
In Yonisti Gray's little book, Cross Trails and Chaparral that she wrote in 1925, she came here in 1906. And so she saw it from that, from that time. And she was describing what, for instance, the point was. And it would be very much like what's at Carmel Meadows. You know, that, what is that? That's coastal prairie? Right, coastal prairie.
I really, I like Neil's idea. I think it, it did get integrated in this version, but it was buried. It's in, it's under canopy, which is actually the place I would probably put it, but it was under 2.1, where we said legacy groves and parks and open spaces to help replace canopy loss to development, which would be on private parcels. When we talk about legacy groves, we're talking specifically about the Monterey pine. And so that was actually the very first time, I think, that we took this concept of pines specifically and how are we going to maintain? Because that was one of the things that came out of the survey, was like that the pines and the cypress and the oaks are so iconic to sort of our, our community. So I think maybe just a little bit more there, but these are Monterey pine legacy groves.
Maybe we need to be explicit.
And I think we should. So I like, I like that because I do think one of the things we're after is to maintain pines. And that is a challenge right now.
So that sort of goes back to a question that I asked earlier, and I asked Nikki, and I should probably ask Justin as well. Because the Monterey pines are a dying tree, that's one of top concern, we're sort of at that point where a lot of our trees in that 80 to 100-year range are coming down. Where we can place groves, and you had mentioned not on the Mission Trail Nature Preserve, but someone was, had mentioned of the Forest Theater, which might be a great spot. So maybe we can start to talk about those things, if we can bring that to the forefront. Because I know we're trying to sort of put them in certain places in town that maybe they should or shouldn't be, I'm not sure. But maybe we can start to identify some, some groves and maybe out of this meeting or subsequent meeting, we can start to talk about where those places might be now we know. And I know we've talked about the Mission Trail, and now we know that's probably not a good idea. So may, perhaps we can start to, identifying, Justin, with your help, you probably know better than anyone, where we might want to start considering planting some of these trees in larger groves. Yes, I'll pass it to you.
I think that's a great idea. And Davy Tree produced that one map of potential planting spots, but I want to remind everybody, we can't just look at the trees. It's not just about the trees, it's about the forest. And the forest includes understory plants, shrubs, all kinds of things that contribute to the overall vigor of the trees. It's part of a package. And it's not only just places, but I know the city has medians and roadway sides, you know, the contiguous right-of-ways. So there are places that you can't put a tree, but you could put a manzanita and a sea anothus and a toyon that overall contribute to the vigor of the forest. So think about that. Yeah.
So I think the concept of the legacy groves in these sites we've talked about, I know that's an implementation plan. I would love to see us do something also in Devendorf Park. That is the primary flagship park of the city. And when you're in Devendorf Park today, you don't really feel like you're in a Monterey pine forest. And I'm not saying to change that entirely, but I, I would, I'd just like us to encourage to at least explore, is there a room for a couple of Monterey pines somewhere in Devendorf Park?
Just, just one minute. I'll just say Papa Devendorf was a cousin of ours, and he loved Monterey pines. And he was the one, well, we won't, we won't argue about that. But anyhow, he loved Monterey, he loved. Yeah. Well, he loved Monterey pines. We know that because he planted them all over the place. But, but wouldn't it be great in Devendorf Park?
No. I don't, I don't think so because Devendorf Park is used for families and several, and episode, you know, music sometimes, holiday, special things. And so having all of that, so there's beautiful oaks, which are native, of course, so that's, it's a good show of beautiful oaks. And, and, and having it open as a family park for special times, I think is very important.
Just on the periphery.
Well, then you have shade and stuff and, you know, that's, that's a traditional place for episodes. And I, I don't think we should change. And there's other places to put pines. That wouldn't be one I'd choose.
So Nikki, that, you just made me think of something on number two, when we're talking about just maintaining the 35% canopy cover. Should, should that also have a goal of the underforest? Not just 35% canopy cover, because that's only half the battle? I would, I wouldn't know that from this necessarily as a goal. We're really talking, because we keep talking about canopy, canopy, canopy.
Is that where I, where I wanted the antibiotic diversity to be stuck in?
Right, but as a goal.
Oh, yeah.
I think when they measure canopy, it includes that.
Yeah.
It's part of the.
But you don't, yeah, you don't necessarily see that underneath the canopy, right? You're saying.
Okay. So bringing this back to this particular goal, fast forward six months or nine months, Justin, and, and we're going to ask you to come up with an implementation plan, right, to start dealing with all this. Is there enough info in this goal to support and give you enough guidance to go forth on that? The sustained, you know, the whole discussion about Monterey pines and its support and finding correct locations, et cetera, et cetera. Is there enough info in this particular goal, you know, legacy that was discussed so that you'll, and will others who read this document understand that too?
You know what? It's, it's in this, it's in this big table. It's the, oh, yeah, thanks. It's in this big table under four, which is sort of the yellow color. And if you read 4.1 habitat protection, 4.1.1, native understory and habitat areas. And then 4.1.2 coordinate planning to support wildlife corridors. That all feeds into that.
That will change number in a couple of years, right? That's just. There is. That's implementation, right? And so that's going to change over time. And again, I just want to make sure that the goal, as we're writing it, is capturing, you know, the great discussion about the Monterey pines and what we want to do, as opposed to having it buried in, you know, section 4.1.2.1 in, in the table, you know, row 13, column four. Makes sense?
I just want to make one other comment. We're talking, we were talking about the 35% number. We don't remember now what historically it was. Friends of Carmel Forest, we had, did tree surveys for years, and so I'm going to forward those numbers to you guys. Yeah, exactly. But I think one of the reasons to put. exactly. But I think one of the reasons to put a minimum in there is to hold a line in the sand so that future generations won't forget. So just FYI.
Yeah, so 4.2 Policy Alignment. Municipal codes should reflect updated forest goals. Clarifying tree protection regulations, expanding setback requirements, and enabling enforcement ensures better outcomes during development and tree removal decisions. And that's kind of what got us here, is that we were going to update the municipal code, and everyone decided, or everyone previous to me and Ken decided that we should update the forest management plan, and then we can update the codes. So this is just basically saying that we're going to make good on bringing the municipal codes into the 21st century with, with the guiding documents.
Before I came in, had, had you spoken about the climate adaptation coming into congruence with the climate adaptation plan?
It's the next, the next bullet.
Oh, is that the next bullet? Oh, okay, well, then I'll, I'll have my comment then. Somebody?
All right, 4.3. Climate Resilience and Adaptive Forest Practices. Urban trees mitigate climate-related impacts such as heat, drought, and stormwater runoff. Prioritizing species with tolerant, tolerance to drought, heat, and pests using an adaptive selection guide and using local genetic stock to support resilience and resistance, ensures forestry practices reflect future conditions and preserves ecosystem services. I think this goes along with what we had talked about, and what Nikki talked about, is that we have the tree, we'll have a tree, a recommended tree list that is not buried or locked into this plan. It's going to be an amendment, and it can be adjusted as needed. So if something does happen to one of our trees that we really love, a novel pest or disease, then we can, you know, put moratorium, adapt, and put something more that makes more sense.
Should we put anything, any, about fire, about?
That's the next one.
Oh, it's the next one? Okay, good.
I just thought you'd ask a question. So I don't know if you're aware of the policy that's in the climate adaptation report, because basically what they say is that Monterey pines are not going to survive climate change, and they ought to be swapped out for southwestern pines and Mexican pines, which is a terrible idea, and I don't think it should be in this plan. I think.
It's patently incorrect.
It's patently incorrect, so I think it needs to be removed. Just extrapolate. No, it's not in, in your plan, but, but that it's supposed to be, this plan is supposed to be in compliance with and synchrony with the climate adaptation plan, which has a plan for the forest to swap out trees.
So one of the things, I just want everyone, because we're going to be also going into this wildfire resilience, and if anybody's seen the forest defense plan, it's really very like.
Dr. Connie?
Yeah, thank you. So what it is, is those are just like guidelines, right? These are like, but we, as experts in our community, will manage, take information, but what is best for what we know scientifically and, and socially, what is the best thing for, for our area? So, cool, thank you very much. Go to goal five, Integrative Wildfire Resilience into Forest Management. This is something new created. Wildfire Preparedness is critical to preserving Carmel Forests, safeguarding residents, and protecting irreplaceable public and private assets. As climate change accelerates wildfire risks, incorporating fire mitigation into daily forestry practices ensures a safer and more sustainable future. The city of Carmel by the Sea, along with Monterey and Pacific Grove, has a community wildfire protection plan. This plan, completed in November 2023, aims to reduce wildfire risk and increases community resilience. It says, "The CWPP identifies areas and action items for mitigating wildfire risk." So the objective is 5.1 Vegetation and Fuel Management. Strategic vegetation management reduces wildfire intensity and spread, particularly in wildland urban interface areas. Utilizing risk-based prioritization and site-specific approaches improves long-term effectiveness. To implement this objective, the city will identify and map formal fuel management zones in and adjacent to high-risk areas such as Mission Trail, Nature Preserves, Pescadero Canyon, and Forest Hill Park. Before I continue reading, no, we've been doing that already. So when With Us was written, we were already in the process. I'm not, we don't, all the things we have in here, we are already in the process of, to do. I wasn't waiting for this to get done. Annual fuel load assessments will be conducted to guide vegetation treatment priorities using data from both the CWPP and the Davy Resources Group. Targeted understory thinning and ladder fuel removal will be carried out in critical locations, especially along park edges and public-private interfaces, to, to reduce the risk of ignition and rapid fire spread. Species and age diversity will be promoted within these zones to increase the forest resilience to fire and support ecological recovery. Where feasible, the city will coordinate vegetation management efforts with adjacent property owners and partner agencies such as CAL FIRE to ensure cross-boundary effectiveness. How's, any comments on that one? Straightforward? 5.2 Strengthen Defensible Space. Creating defensible space around structures helps protect homes and provide vital access for emergency responders. Consistent enforcement and homeowner education are key. To strengthen defensible space compliance and effectiveness, the city will continue to enforce its defensible space ordinance through annual inspections focusing on properties in high-risk zones such as, such as hillsides, neighborhoods, and canyon perimeters. To assist residents in meeting requirements, the city will develop visual guides and property-specific checklists that reflect Carmel's unique vegetation and architectural context. In partnership with Monterey County Fire and CAL FIRE, the city will conduct joint public outreach campaigns, wildfire preparedness events, and home hardening assessments on an annual basis. In addition, the city will organize targeted workshops and demonstration projects to help residents understand and implement defensible space principles in ways that align a neighborhood character and ecological values. Good. So far, so good. 5.3 Home and Infrastructure Hardening. Physical improvements to structures and landscaping significantly reduce the chance of ignition from embers and radiant heat. This is especially important in community with historic homes and dense tree cover. The city will promote the use of fire-resistant building materials, including ember-resistant fence, non-combustible siding, and Class A fire-related roofing as part of a new construction and renovation efforts. Retrofit programs will be encouraged, particularly for homes near designated fuel management zones, to increase the structural resilience of older and historical buildings. The city will also support fire-resistant landscape practices by providing guidance on appropriate plant spacing, spacing, species selection, and maintenance techniques that reduce fire risk while maintaining the city's distinct natural and cultural aesthetic.
Do you have some?
I don't know if, I don't know if you're familiar with the California Chaperal Institute's work, or Dr. Chad Hansen's work. And what they suggest is, well, I, I have a personal experience. When I was a very little girl, we had a cabin in Carmel Valley where I was raised, and the valley caught on fire on the other side, on the east side of Carmel Valley Road. And I was about three, I think, and my father, we had oaks all around us and willows by the river, and back of Gardner's Tennis Ranch, as a matter of fact. So the embers were coming down pretty fast and furious, and my father got up on the roof with the hose, and my mother had a hose down below. I was in the bathtub in an inch of water. And, and they just sprayed the house and sprayed the foliage. The house next door burned down, but ours didn't. And all our neighbors were doing the same thing down the, down the, there weren't very many houses at that point. So they, they're recommending home sprinklers, external sprinkler systems. And I mean, I know water is an issue around here, but maybe there's some way we could encourage, like neighborhood cisterns, or have people, you know, place a cistern on their property.
And those are great points. One of the things is, what is the forest team be able to do on that one? I mean, it's mostly planning and building codes and stuff like that, so.
And, and the, internally, internally, the, the problem with the external sprinklers is without a cistern or a pool, we're all drawing off the same water system. And that is, and that's the problem, is if, if everyone were to do that, then the firefighters show up and the hydrants could be dry. So.
But that's why I was thinking a neighborhood cistern, or, you know, I don't know, just, it's not each person having a cistern on their property.
I, that would be great. I don't know if we can demand that.
So this information could be part of this forest stewardship, where you put together a booklet, or you put it online, where people can know about trees and fire, and they're all educated.
Awesome. Great points, everybody.
We have more specifics later.
Exactly. And changes, yep. 5.4 Policy and Funding Alignment. Wildfire resilience must be embedded in land use policy, capital planning, and city operations. Doing so improves coordination and increased access to external resources. To align wildfire mitigation with broader municipal frameworks, the city will integrate wildfire resilience goals into the general plan, local coastal program, and capital improvement plan. The tree ordinance will be amended to allow for expedited removal of hazardous vegetation based on CWPP-defined risk factors and professional assessments. The city will actively pursue state and federal grant funding to support wildfire risk reduction, including opportunities for vegetation management, defensible space compliance, and infrastructure retrofits. Public-private partnerships will also be explored to expand the city's capacity to implement high-impact projects. Lastly, wildfire resilient design and compliance with defensible space standards will be, will be required for all applicable new developments and major renovation projects within identified risk areas.
I just want to say that, I know that was a mouthful, that this is something that the Forest and Beach Commission is going to be looking at in the upcoming months. We are going to be looking at our policies, just like we've talked about, the number of trees on a lot, where they're placed, and various different things. We'll also be working with the planning department, who will be, they'll be looking at changing building materials, and so there's going to be some changes kind of coming down in the, in the coming months and years. So we, we are aware of it, and we are probably going to be proactively moving forward on a prior-to-even laws taking place, is what, what our commission is discussing. So this is something that will definitely be affecting our commission, and what we're doing in our commission, and planning as well. So just want to thank you, Ken, for adding that. That hasn't been a part of our master plan in the past, and I know that that's something that will be from sort of now on, going forward. So thank you for adding that.
So far, those are the goals that we have in the, in the plan. Lofty, but I think, you know, this is a long-term plan, and it, it sets that guidance, that sail for us to move forward. And, and I think, you know, any plans, that anybody's ever worked with plans is, they think it's one and done, like this is it, and that's it. And we always can revisit. Things change. New things come up, new science we discover, and we can always come back in the future as well and say, you know what, we can do a, a planned amendment or a plan update. You know, that's, it's a living document, because we want the most successful forest we, in this, in this state, is right here in Carmel by the Sea.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and pass it on.
Pass it on. No, I think we're good. I just wanted to, and I know we're sort of ticking at our, our final minutes, I just asked if, that if we had time to take public comment, so we, we can, we just need to do it up at the podium. So if we want to do that, then we can perhaps, Kelly, did you have something you want to say first?
I have one comment.
Okay. Once Kelly's, once the comments are done.
We didn't get to the implementation guidelines, but I, I think it's important there to add measurable goals for every single goal and objective that we have in the plan. So let's just make sure that, and it might be useful to set measurable goals that are like one year, three year, five year, even if the three or five years change over time, it might be nice to look out, like where do we want to be in a couple of years, and what can we do now, so that we're, we're thinking forward on the implementation plan. I think it was in, Neil, you commented at 2.1, 2.4, 2.4, where it said establish measure forest goals, like pull that up into the vision, but also make sure in the implementation we have that. I think that's one thing we could really improve on, is tracking, measurable tracking.
So on that note, are, are we done with kind of this? Or are we going to have another meeting about the implementation goals? What's the plan on that?
Do you want to talk about the implementation, you mean the implementation guidelines?
Well, I, I mean, I have a lot of thoughts about this. So either we come back and have another kind of meeting about these goals, and how, and to expound on what Kelly said, we've kind of lost prioritization, we've lost any dollars that used to be attached in the Davy Report, that's all gone. So I'm a little concerned about that. So if we're going to bring it back up at another meeting, I'll just hold all that, but if we.
Yeah, we could do that, because it is a further conversation, longer.
Longer, so revised.
Yes, yeah, especially as we update this. Thank you.
That's a good point.
I think you should come up with the measurable goals, right? Like, I'm not trying to, that would be something you, you would all, you would go with the implementation plan and bring that back.
Yes. So we can start having.
Yeah, all good points, and thank you, Ken and Justin, for leading this. My, my obvious next question is, you have a lot of information, when can we get an update? And, you know, that's in the spirit of moving this forward towards completion.
And also, Ken, are you going to be putting the, Nikki's draft online so that people can access it?
Yes, what we're going to do is get together and update all the new stuff that everybody's been talking about and changes, and also adding in that information in the appendix and updating the beginning, and then getting it out to the group.
Her, her draft is going to be available, is it?
It'll be incorporated into this.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure, I know, we were actually talking about this during, during break. There, there wasn't a Nikki's draft and a date, and a Davy draft. Nikki took a draft and she worked it, and that's my understanding, because I was also someone who had edited it. So, so it, it wasn't her, her own draft, but she has edited our, our draft, and we will be putting back some of the information. This was more of the goals and the implementation, but we are going to be adding back. So there isn't necessarily an actual separate draft that she had done. She was working on the draft that, from Davy, and we had.
A lot of Nikki's work is in here.
A lot of Nikki's work is, is here, right.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure where the, the next version comes from, right? And it's coming from Ken.
Ken.
Yeah, we're working on it together, but.
Yeah, but you're going to be the one that sets it out. I don't, I kind of want to make sure that there's not one draft that Nikki's working on, and one that Ken's working on, et cetera. Ken owns this, it's coming from Ken, that's the next version, et cetera.
And that's what Nikki had given her draft to Ken in June, and then Ken looked at it. So it has been, it, there haven't been separate drafts around, so it's been modified, exactly.
Yeah, I don't care what's happening. The task will be for us to make sure we are organized, that we've got.
Right.
It's, it's, you get it.
And while I've got the mic, I'll just make sure to, thank you so much, Nikki, in addition to Ken and Justin, because you guys have been a big, big part of this, so thank you so much.
So public comment. Go ahead, please.
I have a little appointment, so I'm going to. Oops, sorry. I picked the wrong moment.
That's okay, I'm still standing.
Okay. Is this, is this going to hurt it?
Is this... Is this going to hurt it? Thanks, Yvette. Oh, great. Thank you. Just a few comments. I'm going to go real quickly, which I know you'll appreciate. In terms of distribution, thanks a lot, Victoria. And in terms of public trees, et cetera, I'd like a more scientific definition of what tree health means, i.e., you know, what does poor health mean? What is good health, fair health? Because these numbers, these definitions directly relate to the cutting down of trees. And there's no definition of here, in here, what a very poor tree is. Thank you for nodding your head, some of you. What a poor-conditioned tree is, very poor, excellent, you know, or good. And I think we need something in there about that because it's not a scientific, it's not based on science. It's just based on maybe just observation. Are we testing these trees? It's easy to test trees for certain problems, diseases, et cetera. And I think we need to understand that. Also, under staff structure, you know, you discuss forestry operations. I think that one of the most important things in here is training, 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 training of staff. And I thought your section one was very good. I would suggest that maybe you want to substitute as a beginning goal, number four. Just think about that, if you would. And under number two, for maintaining minimum canopy, I am so tired of listening to people compare us or take information from Palo Alto. It's a totally different community, different area, different ecosystem, different everything. We should be concentrating on developing our canopy from a scientific point of view. What do we need to sustain our climate, our ecosystem, and also, you know, prevent fire? And all of these things need to be measured in terms of how we recognize our canopy's total importance and also our understory, which should not be disturbed because then you're destroying the ecosystem. So that has to really be emphasized. Let's see. I'm trying to hurry, guys. Public education is excellent. We really need to work on that. We should be doing something like... Well, a number of us in our different capacities have been talking about this. We need a booklet to go out to every single new resident and every other year or yearly, probably not yearly, but every other year or so, we need something to go out to current residents, not just new people. But I just drove home between, on our break... Lunch break, and we had a tree service out totally destroying a giant redwood. I mean, ladders, just to hold spaces between the branches. And we need staffing to take care of some of these things and need people to understand it. I thought I had a couple more minutes. And I think what you've done with the infrastructure hardening and that, we can discuss that more in detail next time we have a meeting. You were kind of rushed, I think, in terms of discussing the fire issues and number five. And so I'll just say that, you know, this has been a very productive meeting. I think it's not as good as Carpenter Hole because we cannot hear you. I cannot hear you where I sit right over there. Half of the time, I could not get notes and recognize the important points that you individually are making because this sound system, as always for the last, since I can remember, has been horrible. And this new stuff isn't worth much either. So, you know, we're going to have to make some adjustments next time we have a meeting.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for this terrific meeting. And again, as I said at the beginning, the redirection, the responsiveness to the community, the science, 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 science. I don't want to make any comments. I really enjoyed the discussion and I just loved everybody's perspective and I took copious notes. And Ken said to me in a sidebar, put it in writing, you know... So I just wanted to clarify for anyone who's watching and just for the videotaped people who come back. What is the process now? Shall we, those of us who've now gotten a chance to hear your comments, to look this over in real time, shall we write up things? Is there going to be a repository for that? Is there going to be a way that that comes back and informs the next meeting? So I don't know if you can release a statement about that or... I just want to make sure that people who weren't able to attend, people who are going to be doing this retrospectively by doing the YouTube will be able to give their input to. And then I, this is a side note, but when I asked Nikki all those questions about what we had developed scientifically to so far, this is a two-item wishlist about requests for science that would then, again, inform and I think answer a lot of the questions. So I'm just going to give this to you all so you see what... This is just, it's not really, it's not really me. It's just things I've heard people ask for around town and put into some kind of summary here. I don't know. I only have four copies. Do what you will.
You can copy one for me.
Take one.
One person.
One person online. Anybody else in the community?
We can do the online. One person online.
Chris Campbell, go ahead. You'll need to unmute your...
Yes, yes, yes. You can hear me now.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I really enjoyed the meeting. But one of the things that concerns me is that there is... This is really all aspirational if there's no serious conversation about how to pay for the implementation of the plan. And I've only started watching the Forest and Beach Commission meetings maybe five or six months ago. And I've been so disheartened to learn that we don't even have enough money to water the trees the city is planting on public property. And we don't have the staff to follow up. When homeowners remove, either during the construction or remodeling process or because trees are dead, when they remove trees, no one follows up to see if the trees have been planted that are required to be planted to replace them. And I've had that experience myself. Three or four years ago, two oaks had to come down on our property. We planted two trees and no one ever came to follow up to check and see if we did. And it sounded, from what the foresters said at one of the meetings, that it's on the honor system. So anyway, I've enjoyed the meeting. I've learned a lot about this, but I hope that once you get this fine-tuned, there can be a serious examination of how the city can fund enough staff to take care of our forest. Thank you.
Nobody else? Anybody else? Last call? Excellent. Well, this has been very, very, very helpful and productive. I mean, we're moving this forward. We're moving that needle to the next step. Like I said, we're going to take all these comments. In fact, I'll be re-watching the videos too, see if I missed anything. Try to get everything put in there. We're going to work together. Again, this is a team effort. This is not a, you know, a Ken effort. This is a whole team, whole community effort. And in order to be successful, it takes the team to work together. And, you know, a lot of times we might have disagreements, right? Should we go left? Should we go right? Should we go forward? The key is always to find that zone of agreement. What's that? What is it we want? So you step that implementation or that minute thing and you step back and say, what is it we really want? And we all understand the common goal, a healthy forest in our community, a thriving forest. So always remember that when we start going down into the disagreements, like how can we step back and bring this out to say, where's that zone of agreement? Will we both agree and how do we move this forward?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
And may we also remember the greater forest of which we're apart because what we do here in Carmel has this history. What we do here has an impact on this rare endangered forest ecosystem that is on the rest of the peninsula. This wild forest is, can be impacted by us pretty dramatically if we're not careful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victoria, I have something for you.